meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled on and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three signing of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, extending certain COVID- nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public had adequately accessed the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity, Channel eight and ten seventy, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the Towns website as soon as possible. So first item of the agenda is to establish a quorum. Select Board Member Member De Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metters is present. It's been a while. We had the holiday break and yes, I was on vacation in Arizona last week and I thank you guys for taking care of things while I was away. So good to be back. We have a pretty hearty agenda tonight. We have approval of set of minutes for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have public announcements and agenda item requests. We also have drinking water testing and pumping update for the month of December. And then our regular business agenda is consists of the five following items. Consider placement of sharks of sharks for Chatham Art in the Park two thousand and twenty-four. We have item B, which is our Waterways Advisory Committee request for a letter of support for Bill H three three six two. Item C will be transfer station phase one and phase two project update, which continuation from last week's meeting. Item D, low pressure sewer systems and grinder pump recommendations. And final item E, consider amendments to the Select Board meeting public participation policy and public announcements and agenda request policy as recommended by Town Council. Just to note, Town Council is monitoring the meeting on tonight online. So if there's any questions for the board, we have that resource available to us this evening. So with all that said, I will start with approval of minutes for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion of approval.
I'll move.
We are second.
Second.
Corrections, omissions. Mike?
I just have two on page five. And the second paragraph that begins the estimate was thirty thousand. I think that was ten years up through two thousand and twenty-two. And then I would add to that and was increased in two thousand and twenty-three to thirty-three thousand. And then on page six, second line from the top, after the word licensing, words licensing agent, it says can, I want to strike can and insert adequate time two. That's all I have.
Additional questions, comments, or edits? Okay, all is in favor. Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And I will abstain since I was absent. So next, public announcements and agenda item request. I have one, but I'll hold off for the moment. Anyone through the board? Shereen?
Corey, I have an announcement and then an agenda item request. So this Friday marks the commencement of the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting, and the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association has been actively addressing wastewater issues, particularly in response to the Title V changes resulting from the Conservation Law Foundation lawsuit, I think, last year or the year before. During my tenure as the SIMLA's president, we facilitated multiple discussions with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll throughout two thousand and twenty-three. And we have scheduled a meeting with her at the MMA, MMA event on Saturday that aims at further tackling these concerns. Some of the key issues that some of the towns have raised, some of the Select Board members involved with SIMLA include the funding component to wastewater. It sounds like the state is asking the towns to really look at local options for funding, and we want to keep this on the radar, that a while ago there was some promise of some major money that would come the Cape's way. And the other piece to this is the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP responsiveness, or lack thereof, to the permitting and some of the complications that are coming up because of the changes in Title V and what had happened last year. So our objective is to address those concerns during Saturday's meeting. Town managers, county commission representatives, and our state delegation and any staff attending the meeting, the annual meeting are invited to participate. So what I'm going to do is, we intend to engage LG in the wastewater, but we also want to keep high on our radar the housing challenges that the Cape is feeling as well. But I'll send out a follow-up email to everybody once the now president of SIMLA sends out the notice on the meeting and then follow up with everybody later on. My next thing is an agenda item. I had a meeting with a member of the Shellfish Advisory Committee last week, and he brought to my attention that the Shellfish Advisory Committee had met last summer to address fertilizers. And they moved and drafted a letter that was dated July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, revealing that during their monthly meeting on July sixth, they voted unanimously in favor of urging us to contemplate a prohibition on fertilized users within the town. The primary goal for, obviously, for Shellfish Advisory is to safeguard and preserve the habitat crucial to the well-being of shellfish. And so their letter outlines their approach, referencing similar bans from other towns, and they delve into the repercussions of nitrogen loading on natural shellfish stats and sets. And the person that I met with was really forthcoming with being a longtime shell fisherman and seeing what's going on with the harbors, and he just feels that, you know, we're losing our natural sets, the shellfish aren't setting naturally as they used to do, especially in the stage harbor and mill pond area. So what I'd like to do is get an agenda item to engage the discussion on the issue. I'm not sure if it's up to us to review the process and refer it to Board of Health or maybe Board of Health and Shellfish Advisory meet together, but I think it should start here and then we can move appropriately. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Additional comment for the board? There's, all right, there's one thing. Since I was absent last week, I am a week late. This is my annual outcry for volunteers, New Year's resolution time. This is a list of our current Board Committee Commission vacancies as of January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I will note, we had a couple of interviews last week. We have a couple of interviews this week. So we are in the process of trying to fill some of these openings. So if there's something that catches your interest, as I read this list, and there's an opening, we will more than happy to interview you. If there's something that catches your interest and there's not an opening, please submit a talent form and we could keep you on file. And if an opening does come up, we'd be more than happy to reach out to you at a future date. So at the current moment, we have Aunt Lydia's Co. Committee, two openings. Bike Ways, one student opening. Board of Health, one alternate. Cable Advisory Committee, one committee for people with disabilities, two open seats with two alternates. Community Housing Partnership, one open seat. Conservation Commission, three associate members, which being our regulatory committee, it'd be very important to try to start filling these committees or filling this opening for the benefit of the committee. It's a great opportunity to learn the process. Council and Agent Board of Directors, one opening. Economic Development Committee, two openings. Gulf Advisory Committee, one opening. Historical Commission, one alternate. Human Services Advisory Committee, one opening. Local State Building Co. Board of Appeals, four openings. Open Space Committee, one alternate. Planning Board, one opening. Public Ceremonies Committee, three openings. Railroad Museum Group, two openings. South Coast Harbor Plan Committee, one opening. Summer Residence Advisory Committee, two associate members. Traffic Safety Committee, one alternate member. Wastewater Intermunicipal Agreement Advisory, one opening. And the Zoning Board of Appeals has two associate members. So regular members serve three-year term, associate and alternate members serve one-year term. So if any of these openings pique your interest, please reach out either online, there's a talent form listed on our town website, or you can get a hard copy downtown at our office. You can pick one up and fill it out by old-school handwriting. So either way, if you are willing to serve, we would greatly appreciate your help and assistance. So with that, is there anyone in the audience who has a public announcements or agenda item request? Is there anyone online that has a public announcement or agenda item request?
Mr. Chair, Stephen Buckley has his hand up.
Stephen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I was looking at the future agenda requests for, that have been listed in the past, and I noticed, I remembered that, was it five years ago, I requested that we have a development, that an agenda request be the development of communications and civic engagement policies. And so I noticed that an hour ago, the board is going to be considering public participation policy revision. So just happened to find out about that. And so I would say that maybe there needs to be an item, agenda item request on how to proceed and which, which item, past item requests ever get considered and how they get to the top of the heap. Because this seems to be timely, but I don't know why it's, you know, five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Though, and to note, we've, the Town Manager and I've had conversations over the years about how to start catching up on some of the items, because I know there's some members of the board who have made requests that are still pending and some members of the board who are not with us, who have stepped down, who are still pending. So we need to do some catch-up, acknowledge, totally recognize that. So anyone else online who has an agenda item request or public announcement? No?
No.
All right, thank you. Next, drinking water testing and pumping update for the month of December. We have our DPW Director, Rob Failey. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So I just wanted to give you a brief update concerning the drinking water projects, Wells five and eight, and Wells ten and eleven, and also the pumping comparison for the month of December. So as far as Wells five and eight, again, temporary treatment is offline for the winter. We have, for the permanent treatment facility, we have advertised for the pre-qualification packages. We expect those to be in on January eighteenth, and once we received, we'll review those packages and we'll anticipate going out to bid around mid-February. Chatham Wells ten and eleven, construction is ongoing. We are very near substantially complete with Robert B. Hour, which is great news. All the testing and systems that we've been checking so far are all working well. SCADA has been being programmed and, and things are shaping up nicely. We're still on track for a February activation. For the water operations side, December, we never, never hit the low-level alarm, still pumping between three and six hours per day. And when we compare it from December two thousand and twenty-two to December two thousand and twenty-three, we are about four percent lower, which equates to about seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons, which is good news. So we're pretty much right on track, very close to average. If we go to the next, it's just a, next page, which is up on the screen, is just a bar chart that kind of helps depict the comparison. Two thousand and twenty-three is in the orange, two thousand and twenty-two is in the blue. If we go to the next slide, it's kind of interesting where it's the same thing, it's just in a graphical form, but you can see that the blue is December twenty-fifth, you know, that big hump in blue towards the right side of the page. It was kind of interesting just how Christmas time last year was so robust, and this year it seems like it dropped off and it was more of an average. So I don't know, just like, I kind of nerd out on some of this stuff, and it's just kind of a, something that sparked my interest. I don't know if it's interesting to anybody else, but. And next, we just have a showing the daily pumpage for each individual well. You can see Wells four, five, and eight are offline for the month of December. But it kind of gives you a good indication of what each well is doing every single day. And again, it's just a graphical bar chart depiction of that pumping for December. And since this is December, it's kind of a year-end summary. I put together a water report that I thought would be good to show just what each well was doing for every month of the year for two thousand and twenty-three. And it just gives you a different, different comparison, some of the numbers. Then you can see the, towards the bottom right, the monthly total for two thousand and twenty-three is four hundred and seventy-eight million gallons. Last year it was four hundred and fifty million gallons. So about twenty-seven million more gallons this year than last year. And this is just the five-year comparison that we started looking at a few months ago. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board? Mike?
Thanks. A lot of good, good data in there, informative. The one thing that I was interested by, and this is just kind of throwing mud at the wall, but if you look at the, the year-end totals page, which shows a column for this year versus last year, I thought it was interesting that the largest numbers in the middle of the, of the year, the years when we have lots of people here, versus the lowest numbers range to as much as five and, and or six times what the lowest is, which last year, last week, we tried to figure out how many people are here in the summer. I'm not trying to apply this to that, but what I am saying is that we have infrastructure that basically accommodates much larger numbers and much larger needs in the middle of the year than we have during the, what we call the off, the off months. So I just thought it was worth noting that for no particular purpose.
Comments from the board? Is there anyone on the audience? Is there anyone online?
Mr. Chair, we have Elaine Gibbs.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions. I was wondering when Wells five and eight, if the RFPs are going out in February, when Wells five and eight are going to be completed and back online, if we can have a date on that, you know, an approximate date. And then with respect to the fact that the feds are, have said that for drinking water, they are going to lower the parts per trillion from twenty to four for drinking water. And anything I've read had said that that was going out last fall for public comment and that it was supposed to take effect at the end of December. I haven't seen where it has. And I was wondering if that has occurred, number one. And then number two, we used to report on the testing of PFAS in, in the, in the drinking water. And I was wondering if we have shown any traces in any of our wells between that four parts per trillion and twenty parts per trillion over the last six months to a year, where that could be a problem for us, where we might have to shut down the wells when those standards go in. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Rob?
Sure, I'll take them in reverse order, just because that's what I remember. So yeah, all of our other wells, you know, aside from five and eight, have been non-detect for PFAS. So there, even though the EPA has talked about and proposed lowering the standards, the four parts per trillion, it's still, I think it's a three-year rollout. I don't know if that clock has started ticking yet, but that is, that is something coming down the pike. But we are non-detect on all of the other wells at this point. And there was a first question, Ms. Gibbs, I just don't remember what it was.
Five and eight status, completed, approximate completion status of the five and eight?
Sure. So once it's bid and awarded, it's approximately a two-year construction window. There's no reason to believe that we can't keep five, well number five, with the temporary vessel operating during the summer months. And it's a very quick transition to get that into the permanent facility when the time comes.
So we would only have well eight off, but well five, my concern is that they were basically shut down in April of two thousand and twenty-one because of PFAS. So if we're talking another two years, that means if we do detect PFAS, we're talking four to five years to get them permanently, you know, up and running with iron and manganese filtration and/or PFAS. That's really scary, that they could be down for that long, if we have a problem in any other wells.
Yeah, no, Wells five and eight will be, it'll be a two-year construction period. So once they are bid, which would be this coming spring, where this, you know, this spring, we would, we'd be a two-year window and they'd be up and online again.
No. But, but from the beginning, when we first detected PFAS, that was in two thousand and twenty-one, and they've pretty much been offline most of the time. And so another two years on that, we're talking four to five years, correct? Unless my math is wrong. Where, you know, we haven't been able to rely on them.
Right. And five has just been a temporary vessel for the summer months.
Right. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any additional online participants? All right. Rob?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next, next, what's scheduled on our agenda is public comments on the business agenda. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go a little different tonight, a little old-school, because I had a request to allow public comment on item D, which was the low-pressure sewer system. I'm just gonna go allow public comment on each, each of the agenda items as we go along for the, for each five items tonight. So we're gonna go kind of back to what we used to do for last night, or for, for previous policies. And coincidentally, we're gonna have a discussion later about those policies. So with that being said, I'm gonna start with business agenda item A, consider placement of sharks for Chatham Art in the Park in two thousand and twenty-four. I guess Kristen Mueller is doing the presentation. And also, while you are coming up to the podium, for disclosure, I am a member of the chamber, I'm a member of the merchants. My understanding is this, this request is focused strictly on the Art in the Park.
Yes.
Charity event. That is, that is, that is part of the merchants' activities that I do not participate in, and my impact on this or my, you know, you know, there's no direct conflict. So I think my, my participation in this is, is fair. So I'm gonna stay within the conversation of this topic and see where it goes. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kristen Mueller, I am actually now a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board, but I'm representing both the merchants and the chamber, because we work together on all of these events. This, just a sidebar, is Angela Bukar, the new executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, who has not met a lot of you yet. So I figured this was a good time to just let you all at least see her face, and I'm sure you'll get to chat at some point soon.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So the request is coming from the chamber and the merchants, because the activities of the organizations get done sort of all together. The Art in the Park has been wildly successful over the last number of years since we started doing it. It was sharks for several years, for quite a long time, and then for several reasons, several years ago, we switched to whales, and they have been just as wildly successful. It's a huge fundraiser. It is our single largest fundraiser of the year. The funds raised from the auctioning of the pieces of art fund a lot of the merchants' activities throughout the rest of the year, including Oktoberfest and Christmas Stroll, and some of the other things that the community has shown that they very much enjoy. So the fundraiser is very important, and we're looking forward to doing it again. Small ask this year, we are going to continue to use the whales. The artists like the whales. It's a nice palette for them. The shape of the whale is nice, and they like to paint on them. But there has been a little bit of, a groundswell of interest in bringing some sharks back to the park, along with the whales, for various reasons. And the big And the biggest one sort of being whether we want to, you know, acknowledge it or not, the sharks are here. I understand that there's some aversion in town to publicizing the sharks, but what we'd like to do is use it as an educational tool. We have a very close relationship with the White Shark Conservancy. We are lucky that they are chamber and merchants members, and that they're here in Chatham, and they bring a lot of people through. They're, they have gone to needing reservations to go to the Shark Center, because it's gotten so busy in the summer. And what we have agreed with them to do is if you approved a certain number of sharks back in the park as pieces of art, is to work with them to create educational tools, to have yard signs with a QR code on them in the park, that I, I've had some extensive conversations with Cynthia at the Shark Conservancy. She offered to create a brand-new landing page on their website that would be for this purpose. So they already have all kinds of information on their site that is helpful. Their main focus is public outreach and education on coexisting with the sharks that are here in our waters. But they would create a new landing page that the QR code from the park would take folks to, that would have all sorts of shark safety information. And we, we're open to what other sort of information you all might want on there, if you approved this. But we're going to work closely with them to make sure that the exposure in the park, and whether it's facts on the, the signs, along with the QR code, or however that plays out, really integrates their public education piece with the art in the park, so that as people are walking through, they can, you know, be learning and enjoying the art all at once. I'm gonna stop there and answer any questions that you may have, and then we can go from there.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Questions or comments from the board? Dean?
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
It's nice to meet you. Well, when I chaired this board eight years ago, no, it wasn't quite eight, but I raised some concerns about sharks. And it was at that time that the Merchants Association decided not to redo the sharks. And I still have some of those same concerns. I'm not trying to ignore reality of what they do on, on cable TV, or what the Shark Center is doing, and I certainly applaud educational and safety efforts. But I am very concerned about the town of Chatham not being tagged as Shark City, USA. I, I don't think that's good for anybody in the town. I don't think it's great for property values, not that our values have gone down. But let me just ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Because when the request first came in, and I read the letter from, the heading says "Art in the Park," which is fine. It did talk about sort of tying in with the 50th anniversary of Jaws, and the Shark Conservancy and so forth. What are you going to title this? Because it was called Sharks in the Park.
It's still Art in the Park.
Art in the Park.
Because it will mostly be whales. The ask today is to just add some sharks back in amongst the whales. And, and again, a lot of the artists want to paint on the whales anyway. A lot of the bidders in the auction would, would like to see some of the sharks again. A lot of the people who bid on the art buy year after year. And there are folks who now have a couple of whales and are looking for something different. But, so there's been a little bit of a request for bringing some. And, and we don't, we are not asking at all to turn it back to, quote, "Sharks in the Park." It will remain Art in the Park. And the sharks will be among, it's not like the shark section and the whale section, they'll be scattered amongst with the information near them.
Do you have a hunch as to what percentage of them would be sharks?
Well, that's what we were just talking about. Originally, the question was to say, maybe let's just put 10 sharks, and we're certainly open to that number, if that's what you're all comfortable with. We were just doing some math about maybe making a percentage of the sharks, somewhere between 15 and 20%, which might put us at 14, 15, 16 sharks. Each year, there's a different number, depending upon how many people sponsor a, a piece of the art, and then how many artists do it. So we don't know exactly how many total pieces there will be, but we would be very open to it being a percentage of that total number, if that's what something that may, so if we only end up with 60 whales, but we do 20% or 10%, you know, however that flushes out, we're open to that.
I wouldn't want to place any restrictions on your numbers. I just really wanted to get a sense of what this was going to be, what kind of publicity was there going to be around it.
The same as it's been in the last few years. It's not gonna make, turn the focus back to the sharks, it will still just be Art in the Park.
Has, have any of the artists or your prospective bidders expressed an interest in other types of sea creatures besides?
We've talked about that as well. Couple of things with that, and Janice has done some exhaustive work on this. Some of the shapes just don't play well in terms of painting on them. We've tried other things in the past, and it, it's just awkward. Some of the shapes don't ship very well, and we, we mail, a lot of the bidders are not local. And so the pieces get mailed to them at the end of the fundraiser, and we pay for that shipping and all of that. So we have boxes and bubble wrap and all of that, and some of the other shapes are just awkward and wouldn't fit nicely in those. So those are some of the practical reasons. Some of the things we've talked about is that some other shapes aren't necessarily recognizable. So we would all love to say, well, let's just do cods. But what does a cod look like when it doesn't have markings on it? Or what does a striped bass look like when you can't see its markings? So tuna is the only other thing we came up with that might be recognizable on a blank palette. But again, that adds some things that the artists don't necessarily love to work with in the fins and all that. So anyhow, it seems that the bidders and the artists, both, these two palettes seem to have worked best for everybody.
Well, I appreciate the way you've presented it. Frankly, I was prepared to vote no when I saw this come forward. And I asked myself, why are they doing this again? But you've explained it, I think, very satisfactorily to me. And it's, it's obviously been a very successful program. People like to stroll through there in the summertime. I do get somewhat concerned about new attractions to town, because I think the, I live downtown, so the last two summers have been pretty overwhelming. I think that's great for merchants. It's not so great for those of us who live down here, but. So thank you for the explanation. I, I like the way you've, you're packaging it, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shereen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for making the presentation, and I'm totally for free expression of art, you know, and, and so I, I'm supportive of however you're gonna put something like this together. Art in the Park is, you know, been a wonderful program, whether it was the sharks or the whales. It's a great addition to, to the town. I know Janice started this a long time ago, to her credit. It's, it's most enjoyable. I love having a cup of coffee, grabbing coffee downtown before anybody's around town, and just walking through and seeing the installations. But the most important thing I really like about this piece is the science collaboration that you're doing with the White Shark Conservancy. The, the marine environment that we have here, we have sharks here. We are, you know, we have academic institutes here studying sharks with White, with the White Shark Conservancy, with other, with the Center for Coastal Studies. They're there, they're all there. This is all a great piece, because it's a piece about science, business, art, and it's a wonderful collaboration. And I really applaud you for doing something of this kind of caliber and substance. As far as the numbers concerned, for me, I would, you know, if I was an artist doing something like this, I'd, I, I wouldn't want to have to be standing in line to decide for my best, you know? I would, I would, I'm fine with, you know, whatever the demand is. You know, if it's, if it's, if it's, you know, people like working with the whales, great. If they like working with the sharks, great. I really, really, really love the, the, the QR code concept with signage and education pieces. The fact that, that the White Shark Conservancy is being very generous in putting a landing page down on this, that just adds a bigger caliber to the whole thing. I'm completely supportive of this, and I appreciate that you came to us to, to, to make your presentation today.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Corey, and, and welcome, Angela, and hello, Janice, and hello, Kristin. You guys are doing a great job down there. Art in the Park has been a smash hit.
Janice.
For years now, for years now, be it, be it sharks or whales or anything. And I, I also echo Ms. Davis's notions of the QR code. I, I would suggest maybe doing the same thing with the Center for Coastal Studies, if you do whales, tie it in, maybe approach them, because they're a wonderful outfit, and that'd be something they, I think they would be probably very interested in. I am totally, not ambivalent, but I'm totally on the side of whatever the artist wants to do. So Janice, you might have to do a little pre, you have to figure out how many, how many sharks to preorder and whales to preorder, et cetera, but I'm totally on the side of let the artist decide.
When we first discussed it, we had said, well, what do we, if we only have 10, what do we do? And we were gonna have a lottery, we were gonna, you know, who wants it? If they don't want it, then they don't need to do it, but if they want it, but, you know, depending upon how you all flush this out, we, we'll work out the logistics.
Just a, a data point, how many, how many entrants were there last year?
Eighty.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's been between 70 and 80 the last several years in a row. And, and that comes from more than the artist, that comes from the sponsors, because a, a business has to sponsor it, and then they find the artist, and some of the artists do more than one. We tried to limit it at one point, but there's so many, there's so much demand for the sponsorships that then some of the artists have had to do more than one, which is a great problem to have. But yeah, it's been around 70 to 80 the last several years.
Yeah, super. It's great. You guys are doing a great job. Have fun. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mike?
I, I don't really have anything to add to all of the comments that have been made here, all of which I agree with. I, I just want to say that I, I think this is a great collaborative conversation about what you're doing, which has been enormously successful. We have commercial interests that are, are, are working off of or leveraging off of shark themes that you've identified in your memo. The, the one thing I do want to say for the record, which is another way of saying what Shereen said, which is, I, I would be very uncomfortable on First Amendment grounds if we put too strong a, a harness on what it is that you're doing. And, and I'm very comfortable with the, the back and forth here, but I do think there is a limit. At some point, we haven't gotten anywhere close to it, that, that, that we would have to recognize if we, if we were somewhat more restrictive. So thanks for everything you're doing, and I'm strongly in support of it.
Thank you.
Well, my thoughts are a couple. One, past actions of this board, kind of pushing back against the sharks, I think were completely appropriate. We had a different time, different philosophy, a lot of education has happened over the years. Sharks are here, and we have to be aware of that, and we have to educate. That, that's plain and simple. The Art in the Park shift from Sharks in the Park, I think is much more appropriate. I understand some of the shapes are more harder to work with, and, and frankly, you could take a whale and then paint a shark on it. So artist expression, I don't ever want to get in the way of that. I really don't. Never, 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 never. Lesson one. I think if this is done in the manner you were approaching it, I, I can be supportive of it. I frankly do think we should come up with a number, and I'm just spitballing 25% of the inventory. In my thought process behind setting a limit is, I know you have an educational component, but this is a fundraiser. And if you have a limited quantity of an item, that may bolster the bidding. So I think if you had, and I'm just throwing 25% out there, I'm not, you know, hell-bent on it, but whatever, it, it adds some value to your ultimate goals, so.
Absolutely.
Those are just my initial thoughts. I can be supportive of this, but I, I do think we should come up with some kind of hard number. Shereen?
I, I think the number thing is a great marketing idea, Corey, but I think I would leave it up to them, rather than us limiting them. That would be my, my take on that.
I would agree with that.
And I would agree with that as well.
All right, fair enough.
Your advice is well received.
So with that, hold on, any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir. If you'd just come to the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Jerry Evans, Chatham went in time, lived here since 96. I was thinking, do 50/50. Let the numbers speak for themselves. Let people decide what they want. So if you do half whales, half sharks, and then which ones raise the most money, then, then go argue it after that.
I, I think the response is the board is letting that up to the organization to use their marketing will as they wish, so yes.
I just want to point out, too, that I've done, every year except for the mermaid year, I skipped that year. And that was the biggest flop year. Have we done four whales, four years of whales? Yes, four or five?
It was 19, it was like 19 or 20 it switched.
You're speaking to the podium, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it was 19 or 20 that it, 2019 might have been the first. 19, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, but I don't know if we did it in 2020.
Janice, if you want to speak, I should get a call to the podium.
Right, 19 was the mermaid, so, so 20, so three years of whales. And I just want to point out that every year, my whales had a shark on it.
All right, well, thank you.
Last year, my whale went for second highest, and it had like 13 sharks on it, so.
Anyone in the audience has a comment or question? Is there anyone online who would make a, make a comment or question?
No.
All right. Would the board like to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the display of Sharks in the Park during the Art in the Park as proposed by the Chamber and Merchants Association.
We'll hear a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, select board member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Waterways Advisory Committee requests for a letter of support for Bill H3362, the David Hansen Act. We have our Waterway Advisory Chairman, Dick Hosmer, I believe, presenting?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for entertaining our request. This came to us a few, well, probably several months ago, and we've had various discussions on it. And I think everyone is aware that at times, we do have a bit of craziness out in the water. Not that this, and even just supporting it, having a state licensing program is gonna solve all the problems, but at least it makes things, I think, easier to enforce. And I think with that, I'll let Jason speak to that point on, on the subject.
Good evening. Stuart sends his warmest regards from a beach down south, so I'm gonna stand in for him tonight. This is an act relative to boating safety, to be known as the David Hansen Act. David Hansen was a 20-year-old young man that lost his life in 2010 off of Plymouth in a boating accident. That started the genesis of the legislation that I think is going into its eighth session now. It's been revised a number of times. The latest current edition is 3362, which I believe that you were provided in your agenda packet. I spoke with Representative Kathleen Lanatra's office today, who is one of the primary sponsors of this. And they basically are stating, they're trying to get something on the books. You know, although I think with any legislation, you can look at it and find some flaws or some things that you would might like to have added or removed. They're trying to get something on the books. The Cape and Islands Harbor Master Association has endorsed this petition, and the Waterways Advisory Committee has as well. So with that, I guess, will I answer any questions?
All right, questions or comments from the board? Shereen?
I have a really strong opinion about this, and for several reasons, seeing, you know, how Seeing, you know, having some very close friends that have been in boating accidents and nearly lost their lives. It's, you know, any, anybody that's got a dollar, you know, enough money can buy a boat and run, and there's no accountability. And, you know, being on the water all my life, I have, you know, just, people just don't know the rules of the road. I personally have had my whaler swamp by a big, you know, 30-foot boat going through the S-Channel full throttle, and, you know, that kind of stuff is dangerous. And I know that you, you know, the Harbor Master Department does a great job in trying to enforce things, you know, along the way. But if you can just pay money, get in a boat, and turn a key and go, we can't do that in a car. And, you know, lives get lost. I mean, the incident that happened that was remarked here in Susuett last year was a good example of that. And, you know, as a kid, I know how we were, you know, out in the Antucket Sound. Ran into one of the traps one night, in the middle of the night, and, you know, just you, things happen. So I'm really supportive of endorsing this and going forward. But I want it to be known that this only is going to apply to Massachusetts State waters. So, you know, that's going to be something that there'll be a lot of work around on this as far as, you know, boats coming from other states or, you know, people cruising in or sailing in or whatever. But I am in support of this simply for the safety factor that it may create. Having gone through a couple of safety boating exercises with Mr. Hosmer, in my lifetime, it's been, you know, it's been very helpful. But there's so many people out there that just don't know what they're doing. And this would be a great way to sort of tamper that down a little bit.
Thank you.
I'd agree.
Thank you.
Our community, I think in particular, could benefit from this just because of the dynamic waterways we have. It's not an easy coastline to navigate. So any type of education preparation and experience that someone could have prior to operating here would be important.
Jeff.
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, I'm totally in favor of endorsing this letter and setting it off. Is that what you were looking for tonight as an endorsement of the letter? So I would move that we endorse the letter as submitted by one of these folks.
I'll second that.
We're second. Further discussion? Yes.
I just had one question. I guess this is to you, Jason, in Stuart's cover letter, and I do support this. He says that there may be need for additional Harbor Master staff time to enforce it. Does that mean additional hirings might be contemplated in the future? Or perhaps you can't answer that question at this time?
I'm not sure if he put that in there, if that was added afterwards. I think the intent is that to actively campaign and enforce this takes staff. I mean, we have seasonal staff. We run patrols routinely. It's, our problem is a lot of other people's retention and training. So I think that might be what he's speaking to.
Thank you.
Jeff.
You guys said it's been filed eight times?
I believe it's in the eighth session.
Any inkling on the odds?
I hope that they're good. I mean, the point of contact I spoke with today was going to call me back with some updated information on the current package. But as always, I think they're hopeful that this will get passed.
All right, thanks, Jason.
Corey, I see that the letter is here, but I think we need to CC our delegation to, and find out where they're landing with this.
CC our delegation?
Yeah.
Put my correct name down?
And put your correct name down.
It's my alias. But before, we have a motion, we have a second. Before we go further, I did say I was going to allow public comments. Is there any public comment from the audience in house tonight? Is there any public comment from the online audience?
No.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. Unless there's further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your support.
All right. Item C, Transfer Station Phase One and Phase Two Project Update, which was continued from January 9, 2024 meeting. Our DPDW Director, Rob Phaley, is present. And we also, earlier today, received a updated report, which we received hard copies for the meeting site with some additional information to give some details on where we stand. So, Rob, turn it over to you.
Sure. Good evening again. Sorry about the tardiness of the report. It took a little while to compile some of that information. Went back to Weston and Sampson, the designers, and tried to real brainstorm about what some of the issues may have been. They talked about the original estimate was prepared in 2019 for a 2,000-square-foot building. That was a cost that came out to 807,000, which, important number to note, is $403 per square foot. It was based on, they had an outside independent consultant help them develop those costs. But then, you know, the things have changed. You know, we went to a larger building, 3,500 square feet. They had, Weston and Sampson had a very similar project in 2019 for the town of Dartmouth. Very similar project to the one that we're trying to construct now. Their cost came in at that time at $457 per square foot. So with the current estimate that they used for this project, they escalated it 44% over that four-year period from 2019 to 2023. And they came up with an estimate of $657 per square foot, which they thought was above and beyond what we would actually need. Of course, bids came in at $1,100 per square foot, which is, you know, we all know that's a little bit kind of off the charts. It's a 140% increase over a four-year period. So that's what we're trying to wrangle here. A lot of the information I provided in the packet is just, you know, the bidder information, what was estimated. I don't know if you want me to go through each and every one of those. Part of the issues that they're seeing was the lack of qualified subbidders. Masonry, we had three bidders. Fire protection had two bidders. Electrical and HVC, each only had one bidder each. Typically, you like to see around five bidders in each of those categories. So the lack of those numbers may show either a lack of competition or there's not enough employees to go around, or there's too much work for people to satisfy all the projects that are happening. There's a lot of different aspects we can bring into this. The biggest differential for all the subbidders was HVAC, where the estimate was 150,000. The low bidder came in at 526,000, which is, you know, over three times higher than what we anticipated. So there was some additional scope that was not included in the original estimate that only equated to $255,000, though. So it's not a game changer. It was the sprinkler system and, I forgot what, oh, some masonry around the perimeter of the foundation, 255,000. If that was the only difference, I think it would be an easy decision. But I know it's a difficult decision. So the strength of the economy, the level of construction activity in the project area, and the available pool of qualified contractors were noted as the big issues why this escalated to what it was estimated to be. So obviously, it's the town's option to initiate a change in the design, rebid the project, to have it come more in line with budgetary expectations. I know Town Council was consulted, and he said that, basically, the overrun, the bids coming over the projected construction costs are more than the available appropriations. So that's a common basis for awarding the rejection of bids. The, sorry, for awarding the authority to reject bids. I apologize. Weston and Sampson thinks that we should not go back out to bid, and I have to agree. You know, many times you go back to the drawing board and you cut things out of a project, and you're left with a substandard building, but the cost winds up being very similar to what you had bid in the first place. My biggest concern is that all of our transfer station employees are still working in the same conditions they were working in when this was envisioned about going on seven years now, I believe it is. I'm not sure of the exact timing, but it was, it's been a while. So I think regardless of the estimated methods used or the cost that was estimated, the building will likely cost the same as what it's bid now. It doesn't matter if we can find flaws in how we got here, but the cost is the cost. So I would respectfully ask that we construct Phase Two.
Couple of thoughts. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time. This is, you know, municipal projects, they seem to take years of discussion and planning and everything, and we all get frustrated at how slow the process can be, you know. We do, and I'm not going to enjoy spending more money than we really projected to. But there's a couple of things that run through my mind. One, usually delay things, you get less for more money. Or you don't have any really cost savings when all said and done. That's the sad reality of it. We have a bidding environment now that I think is going to get tougher and tougher. And I think there's going to be multiple elements of why that is. Qualified workers, housing, transportation, cost of goods. Everything's going to pull together, and we're going to see these numbers going up and up and up. And it's, and it's not good for any municipality to deal with any of their projects. But when it, at the end of the day, this is kind of, to me, this is the promise to our employees that we want to get something done for them. We've recognized the environment they've been working in. We understand that there needs to be improvements done. And to have any significant delay in that project bothers me. Again, I'm not looking to break the bank, but I'd like to find a way to get this, keep this thing moving forward and not step back as much as, and have to rebid as if possible. Because I would like to see these projects move forward for the community and our staff. Because, you know, we've made the promise that for that Phase Two, that facilities and their work environment and everything is vital to us. And the sooner we can get that done, the better we're going to be completing our promise and making a better work environment for them. So that's the kind of path I'd like to try to pursue somehow, some way. But, you know, we are talking a significant amount of money here. So I'll let the board share their thoughts and the public, and see where we are in a few moments. So, Mike.
First of all, I want to say thanks for responding to the questions, the attempt at what I call granular analysis when we discussed this last week. I'm sort of in the same general territory as what Corey just articulated. I think we had crossed the bridge that this work needs to be, that this project needs to be done. I'm not entirely satisfied that we completely understand everything that went into explaining how we got from the estimates to the bids that we're looking at, and indeed, the low bid that we're looking at. Those numbers are just staggering. And they're not really supported by things that we've seen elsewhere, either on a broader plane nationally or across the state or whatever. But nevertheless, it is what it is. And I think our option here is to either bite the bullet, accept the fact that the process was appropriate and legitimate and conducted to the best of our ability to get the best price, and we have what we have. So I'm going to support and agree with your recommendation. The one question I have is, as I looked at it, the place where, you know, more than, well, more than half, a large share of the, what I'll call, overage came in the subbids. And I would just ask, not as a detour or something that we ought to pause, but whether there's any way to let the contract and identify one or two of the subbids that seem to be particularly egregious to try to work to reduce those numbers. And if that's possible, obviously, that would be great. If it's not, I'm prepared to accept it. Thank you.
Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Corey, and thank you, Rob, for turning this around in a week's time. There's no question, if we wait, we're going to pay more. It's just what are we going to actually get for $5.1 million? What are we going to get? We're going to get Phase Two, which is comprised of what?
It's the sitework, the building where, it's the staff building. So there's a supervisor's office, a break room, bathrooms, male and female bathrooms, and a garage area for storing two vehicles and working on some equipment. And the sitework that goes along with that. So there's a new septic system, utility work locally in that area. But that's, it's pretty much focused on the building itself.
Is there a lot of foundation work, the building itself?
Yeah, it's all.
Or new cement, et cetera?
It's all a brand-new facility, a brand-new facility from ground up.
What struck me when I just, I just looked at this now, but this HVAC-fired subbidder, I mean, engineer's estimate in March of '23 was 150,000, and the bid came in at 526,000? And that's for the building for the employees? We're not going to put HVAC into the, you know, the larger building, right? Wow. I said to Mike under my breath, I really should have been a plumber or at least have a plumbing contracting business. That's extraordinary. That's extraordinary. And what kind of heat is it? Is it thermal? Is it geothermal? Is it forced hot water? Or what do we got?
No, it's nothing special. It's just, you know, standard, small, commercial building heating system.
I say it tongue-in-cheek, but I swear they see us coming. I say it tongue-in-cheek. Tongue-in-cheek.
I'm not in support of making any contractor wealthy on our backs. And the only alternative would be to scrap it and go out to bid again.
Yeah, and I agree, you know, reluctantly, I agree with Corey and Mike. We won't move the town forward with respect to the improvements we need to make at the transfer station. They desperately need improvement. We've been talking about it for years. I get it. It's just, I feel like I was snuck it or something. And the other thing is, the building was originally planned for 2,000 square feet, but we put out a bid for 3,500? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
It was 2,000 square feet in 2019. I'm not sure what transpired in the meantime.
Well, that would explain a lot of the increase, to be honest with you. I mean, anyway, I am going to support, you know, spending the money. That's what we've budgeted, that's what Town Meeting has said we could spend. But just not a good taste in my mouth. And I thank you for your efforts, Rob, and Jill, and everybody else. Thanks.
Shereen.
Rob, I really appreciate that you are forthcoming in making your recommendation to go forward with this. That means a lot. And you articulated very well why, and I agree with you. I think that the one thing that stands out is the working conditions that are going on right now at the transfer station. And it's, you know, we have OSHA issues that we need to take care of. I agree with everybody else's sentiments. I'm not going to repeat them. It's a hard pill to swallow. But I don't think scrapping and going forward again is going to save us any money. We're just going to end up having a time delay that's going to be a cost delay. And so I'm in favor of supporting this.
Dean.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I share the sentiments that have been expressed by my colleagues, and thank you, Rob, for bringing this forward. I also appreciate, I know Town Council's on, that we did get an answer to that legal question because I think now we have some information going forward for future bids, that when they come in too high, we can always reject them. And if Pat, if I'm stating it incorrectly, Pat can correct me on that. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So your recommendation is that we go forward with Phase Two as planned, without any minor adjustments that we've talked about? That's correct. And that we can do that within the current appropriation? Or do we need some additional funds?
We have the funds available. It's, that's Phase Two Priority One, but to move to Phase One Priority Two, that would require an additional appropriation at town.
So we don't have to go back to Town Meeting for Phase Two?
Correct.
And that's not a borrowing? That's on the tax rate?
It is a borrowing.
It is a borrowing. So what was, I'm trying, we don't have the memo, I don't have the memo from last week. What was, what did we say about Phase One? What was your thinking at that time?
Well, Phase One came in around 400,000 over engineer's estimate, but there's not enough money at this point to fund Phase One.
So we'd have to go back to Town Meeting for that? And Phase One was sort of the recirculation of the, which would benefit the public?
Correct.
So I'm going to, I support going forward. I think we owe it to our employees who work there. I think we owe it to the public to have a decent building for our staff to work in. I'd like to see us pursue Phase One as well. I'd like us. I'd like us to go to town meeting, let town meeting decide whether they want to come up with a, what, a million and a half or something?
It's about 2 million.
About two? I think we should put in, I'm prepared to offer a motion. I think we should put an article on the warrant for town meeting for Phase One. If there's some sentiment, I'll, I'll offer that, but.
Mike?
Well, I, let me address what Dean just said second. I, I just had a clarification. Jeff, when he opened up his comments, he asked you what we get for 5.1, $5.1 million. As I understand it, your recommendation is that we spend the $3.8xx million to do Phase, Phase Two Priority One. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's 3.8 something. Okay. So now, let me come back. I, I'm, I don't disagree with, I'm probably headed in the same direction as you are, Dean, but I, you know, this is not on the agenda. I, I'd sort of like a, a presentation, a discussion before we agree to place something on the warrant.
Let's put it on for a future agenda item at the chair's discretion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Perfect.
Any questions or comments from the audience in-house tonight? Yes, sir. Just come to the podium.
Gene Dubus, Nine Valley Farm. I've worked on a lot of public works, jobs. And if you don't have a competitive bid, you can have the general contractor solicit bids on his own. If, I've seen jobs where they've only had one bid on an elevator and the elevator came in way over budget. So then they go back to the general contractor, whoever the general contractor is, and you say, "Give me two qualified bids for HVAC." And then you approve that and you don't have to select the filed sub bid. I've seen that done before. I don't know if that's something town council can tell you, if that's what he believes is what I think I know. But I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, Rob, I thought Weston and Sam said had gone over that scenario. Was that for the, the Phase Two Priority One or the Phase One Priority Two?
That was, that was for the ornamental and structural iron. There were no bidders, so we went back out. We delayed the bid opening for a week and put that responsibility on the general contractor to come up with costs for that. But all the other categories, we had at least one bidder.
We did have, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We do have, if I understood what Gene was saying, we do have four general bids. So there was a competitive bid on the general contract.
Your subs?
He's talking about the sub bids.
Okay. All right. He's tapping, so if you want to speak, you gotta go up to the podium.
I believe, I believe you said you had one filed sub on HVAC. I believe if you only have one filed sub bid, that that allows you to ask the general contractor to get bids for that item. It has to be a competitive bid. If you had had two, then you have to accept it. But when you only get one, I've seen it that you can go back to the general and he can ask people that he's worked with in the previous to get him HVAC bids. Or you don't have to, you can, but if you believe that that number is so crazy, it might be something you could look into and save a few hundred thousand.
Well, we do have town council actually monitoring the meeting tonight. Pat, you there?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Would you want to weigh in on this, please?
Sure. There is a right in Chapter 149 to substitute bids when you, when there's a lack of competition. It, it's really a call for the, the town designer to make as to whether, as, as has been noted here, whether the single bid received is so onerous or out of whack that it warrants rejection of that particular filed sub bid. And the general contractor, you know, can substitute a bidder of his own choosing for that particular sub bid. I don't know what prior discussion or consideration of that option has been given here. As I looked at the list that Rob put together, it appears there were two subtrades wherein there were, excuse me, only one, one sub, filed sub bid submitted HVAC and electrical. So that is, that is an option. It is something worth looking into. I don't know what the general contractor's thoughts would be on that based on its connections or its contracting preferences. But it is something that could be explored in more detail, given the fact that we only have one filed sub bid received and two subtrades.
Thank you, Pat.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
And why wouldn't we do that then? I think, I think we should.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I, I want to be clear. I, I mean, I asked the question, I, I'm not, I, I guess I, what I was looking to do was have our cake and eat it too. Namely, we, we secure the, the general contractor and the bids that, that are, where we have more than one. And then, having done that, we see if we can't get a better deal through the general contractor on the, the two, although the one that, that's really out, you know, that, that sticks out is the HVAC, without pausing the whole business to go back. And I, I, I understood Pat to be suggesting we have to sort of reject everything until we, until we hear what we have, what, what comes back on the HVAC, which I would not be in favor.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to delay it, but, you know, if we have the option of rejecting that sub bid or having the general contractor put that sub bid out to bid again, I'm very much in favor of doing that.
I guess for clarification, is the, this seems to be an option that people have done in the past. So if we were to say, okay, go back to the HVAC, come up with another competitive bid, it seems somewhat standard protocol, what is the normal time table, timetable for something like that? I mean, talking a couple of months?
No, I, I wouldn't think so. I mean, I could reach out to the contractor tomorrow and then, you know, it's all at the timing of when an HVAC contractor can review the plans and the submittal and, and get a price back. You know, probably a couple of weeks, I would say.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Hold that thought. Any additional comments from the audience in-house tonight? Is there anyone online who would like a question or comment?
We have Elaine Gibbs.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Yes, Elaine Gibbs. As it relates to Phase One, that's now Priority Two. I assume that that's the same contractor and that, you know, it's currently, the total project is over $7 million. Is there any way when we go, are we, are we firm on that number when we go to town meeting? I think there was always question about that Phase One anyway in terms of priority and what it was gonna accomplish because a lot of people felt that what it's doing is simply, by separating out the commercial, that we're actually becoming the regional transfer station. Because, you know, the haulers that bring stuff in are bringing, bringing in stuff from other towns. And if our rates are lower, they're gonna bring it here instead of to some other towns. And therefore, we would end up raising our rates to the taxpayers in terms of dumping fees. So I, I, I've got a problem with the fact that, you know, the numbers were old and it was kind of a ballpark. Okay, well, let's double it. These aren't prefab buildings and they're not very big. So the number is insane. So I would hope when we go to town meeting for the difference that there is a very good presentation as to why we even need Phase One Priority Two. Rather than, you know, I, I understand the need to improve the conditions for our employees. It's, it's a hellish job and they've been living under really adverse conditions. But the other phase, I think that there has to be a really good presentation of, as to why it's even needed under the circumstances, if I, if that made any sense at all. I, I just think that these numbers are so far out of whack. And I would hope that we would do what Mr. Dubus suggested, that we get alternative sub bids. Because I agree with you, Mr. Dyken, something's really fishy here. I, I've never seen anything go up so fast, particularly since rates are coming down. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Rob, do you want to respond?
So Phase One and Phase Two are two completely different projects. Phase Two is a building, so it's vertical construction. Certain set of skilled contractors would bid on that versus what is proposed under Phase One, which is linear construction. So two very different skill sets, so very, made sense to break them apart and bid them separately.
Okay.
Dean?
It's just a question based on conversation last week. How long is the bid on Phase One valid for? Jill?
I don't know. Did you have that information? So we're, we were getting close to the deadline. So the, the key for bringing it to you in January was for the Phase Two Priority Bid Award for the general contractor. We, it appears that we're gonna reject the bid for Phase One Priority Two because there's no funding and that's one of the criterias town council outlined for us.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments from the board? Would anyone want to entertain a motion?
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move we accept and approve the recommendation of the DPW director and proceed with Phase Two as per the funding that has been proposed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Mr. Chairman, I, I did not intentionally did not include it in the motion, but I, I think there's a clear understanding that the board would like the director to communicate with the, the general contractor regarding the HVAC specifically.
Yes. Aye. Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Low-pressure sewer system and grinder pump recommendations. Water and Sewer Advisory Committee Chair Jeff Colby, I believe, is present. Also to note, we did receive several pieces of correspondence throughout the last couple of days, which will be added to the packet in regard to this topic, so. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Jeff Colby, Chairman of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. Thank you for hearing this recommendation tonight. This is an issue over the grinder pumps that the committee has been reviewing for over a year now. It's a complex issue. There's lots of elements to it. And I will tell you that in order for us to even move forward with a recommendation for you, we had to split this issue up into pump acquisition versus operations and maintenance because it is very complex with a lot of different variables if you combine those together. So really what our recommendation is, is on the pump acquisition piece. We recognize there is more work and more research to do specifically on the operations and maintenance component. With that said, there's an excellent memo in your packet from the DPW director summarizing some of the homework and I think the critical pieces of the information and background. I'd like to cover that just quickly for you. I think it's important to note that our, our committee is very supportive of what I think is a kind of a general policy of installing gravity sewers wherever possible to avoid this grinder pump issue for residents. With that said, there is some other communities on the Cape that have also struggled with the same issue of having a, a gravity system that has low-pressure components to it. One example is the town of Falmouth. They currently have no cost to the homeowners where the town purchases the pumps with a five-year warranty and transfers, and transfers that pump to the homeowners. So there's no cost in that particular community. Another example is the town of Nantucket where there is a discounted price that's negotiated or procured. And those pumps are then transferred to the homeowners at that discounted price. The town of Orleans is another local example here that the, the pumps are discounted, also including the five-year warranty, which is what we're recommending as well. And then one more example that's outlined in, in the packet is the town of Barnstable. That community provides the pumps to the residents. So with that said, there's, there's clearly a split in our area as to how the low-pressure grinder pumps are dealt with by various communities. And each community has studied that extensively in order to get to those, those points. I think it's also important to say as part of our recommendation here that the current cost that's provided pumps to the town of Orleans is $6,000 per unit, which is significantly lower than what the market rate is of those pumps. So that factored into our recommendation as well. With that said, I think it's also important as you start to analyze what the financial impacts of this is to the community, depending on what direction you go with the providing the pumps or a discounted rate, it's important to know how many pumps are within the system and how many pumps will ultimately be within the system. Currently, as per the memo in your packet, there's 32 existing grinder pumps within the system. But at build-out, it's expected that will be approximately 1,000 grinder pumps, so just over 1,000. So it is a, a component of going forward where it's gonna be more significant number of residents that will be impacted. It is important to note that that final number won't be determined until they get into final design and determine how many pumps are actually needed. Again, moving forward with that policy that I mentioned before about maximizing gravity within the system, you could maybe reduce that number as much as possible. There's also good financial analysis with, with regard to that $6,000 number for pumps. When you factor in the total number of pumps at build-out, you're looking at something that's in, on the order of $6 million. So it just kind of gives you an order of magnitude. With that said, our committee on Monday of last week voted unanimously to make a recommendation that we felt comfortable with to the Water and Sewer Commissioners. And just to cover what that recommendation is, is we are recommending that the town of Chatham secure discounted prices for the grinder pumps with that extended five-year warranty. And having the town involved will help provide for consistency throughout the network. That's an important concept that in order to have very similar pumps, so the pumps aren't, not to get too much into the weeds, but the pumps aren't working together. They're not working against each other. They're working together within a low-pressure system. If the town was to provide discounted pumps or some kind of pump incentive, we'd have the same types of pumps and the operations of pumps would be very similar. So from that standpoint, that's a very important recommendation, component of our recommendation. Also with that said, we recommend that the pumps, these discounted pumps that are negotiated with the supplier be provided to the residents at that discounted rate. Indications are that right now, based upon the current market, that that's a $3,000 to $4,000 savings to homeowners with a minimal cost to the town, simply staff time to negotiate that, that effort. So it is a incentive to homeowners that do have grinder pumps. I think there's some research that's been done with regards to connection surveys that Dr. Duncanson had sent out previously. I think in analyzing those surveys, there are indications that grinder pump installations, those connections do cost a little bit more than the gravity connections. And so this discounted pump rate that the town could negotiate would provide some incentive to those affected homeowners. We are also recommending at this time the extended five-year warranty to cover the manufacturer's defects to the pumps. There's very little need for that, but I think it's very important to have that extended warranty. These pumps are very reliable generally. So that is our recommendation in summary. With that said, I think this is a good first step. There's definitely some additional investigation and, and analysis that we need to do. As I mentioned before, primarily on the operations and maintenance side of things as to, as to how the town will, or, or what our recommendation would be for the town to address those types of issues. As was mentioned before, there's a lot of information that's been provided about affected homeowners and what they think the town should do in order to provide various compensation. And I think that still needs to be investigated because it's a very complex issue, as I mentioned. But I'm happy to answer any questions the, the board might have.
Thank you, Jeff, very much for the presentation. Questions or comments from the board?
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I serve, as everybody knows, as the liaison from this board to the Water and Sewer Committee. So I've attended, I think, pretty much every meeting where this has been discussed for well over a year. And I expect we're going to hear some presentation from folks who differ with the recommendation of the committee. And I know that they have a lot of good arguments that they're going to present, and they've done surveys and pricing and so forth, so I look forward to hearing that. I do want to say a couple of things that came out at the committee meeting in the discussion when this was voted, as well as some observations of my own. The general thrust of the argument in favor of having the town purchase the system at the taxpayers' expense is one of equity, that folks who are compelled to connect to the sewer on a low-pressure line shouldn't be disadvantaged as opposed to those who connect on a gravity line. But I would say that in all cases, wherever you are, it's topography-related. It's topography-related because you live on a street where the housing is lower than the sewer line, or you have a house on a lot that's at a significant distance from a gravity line, which was the case with me, and that's ancient history, but it's my own experience. So it can cost a significant amount of money, even if you're connecting to a gravity line, depending on the topography of your property. And if you require a grinder pump to make it work, and you're not connecting to a low-pressure line, you wouldn't be benefited, I think, by the idea that the town is going to, by a system where the town pays for the pump, where the town pays for the pump as opposed to the property owner. One of the members of your committee mentioned as an argument in favor of your recommendation that there are a number of properties in town that are held for investment. There's summer rentals, and was questioning whether the taxpayers should be subsidizing that by providing a free grinder pump. And I think that's a legitimate argument, and I'd be anxious to hear accounted to that. I know that your committee has surveyed various towns on the Cape. I know that some folks who differ with the recommendation have surveyed a number of other towns, and I expect they'll present their comments on that. So one other point about the cost of gravity connection, Mr. Dubas is in the audience here, and his company did mine. You have to dig more deeply to connect to a gravity sewer, because it's lower. The main is lower, and that can be more costly than you do with a low-pressure. So those are some preliminary thoughts. I'm very much open to hearing what everybody has to say before making a determination tonight. But I appreciate the work your committee has done. I know they've taken the issue very seriously, and they've listened to presentations from various people and comments and questions. So we'll see what the discussion looks like as it ensues. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for the board? Jeff?
Thanks, Corey. Jeff, thank you, and thank you to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. This is a big one. This is a hard issue here in town. If a private citizen were to go buy a grinder pump, how much do those pumps cost versus what the town might be able to buy them for?
I know that our DPW staff has done more research than I, but I believe that it's closer to $10,000 with this extended warranty, so that the $6,000 price that another community, Orleans, enjoys currently, it's a $3,000 to $4,000 savings with this negotiated price versus what homeowners can just go and purchase today.
Yeah, and I think it would be good to really have those costs nailed down for what a private citizen might pay. And then Dean, your low-pressure is equivalent to those with grinder pumps. Gravity's gravity. All right. I just wanted to be clear there. I'll tell you where I'm, and not without a lot of deep thought, but some thought. I'll tell you where I'm at with this. And it's fraught with complexities and maybe potential complexities that need to be worked out, and some of which we've noted this evening. But where I stand on is that an investment by the town in grinder pumps and forwarding that investment back to folks that have to use them is an overall investment in our wastewater system. And to really fully maximize the utility and the investment, the tremendous investment that we already made in this system, to leave those folks not tied in because they needed a grinder pump, isn't maximizing the overall utility of this incredible investment we've made in our wastewater system. So I'm leaning towards some mechanism. I don't have the answer. Again, there's a lot of complexities here, but I'm leaning towards the town making a considerable investment in supporting the purchase of grinder pumps for folks, whether it's discount buying them for people the same as Falmouth and Barnstable, if you will, because that's part of the overall investment. By dint of topography, you carved out a spot here in this town by dint of hard work and hopes for those year-round residents at least, and I'm not casting dispersions on the non-residents and/or those folks that have short-term rentals, believe me. But if you've carved up a place to live and it happens to be in a difficult topography, and you're not tying in because of the expense of a grinder pump, then I think the town needs to be in a place to help out. In fact, at some point, perhaps even purchasing them. So that's where I'm leaning. Again, a lot of complexities. I don't even begin to have all the answers, but philosophically, that's where I'm coming from on this one. Thanks. And I think there's ways to go about it with some prudence, and not big bites, but to really take an examination of those folks that are near or want to tie in but don't because of the cost of grinder pumps, and then kind of deal with them on an individual basis. Lot of work, not easy, I get it, but I think it's, I'm really happy you're bringing this issue forward, and that we're trying to deal with it. Thanks.
Mike?
Thank you as well for your work on this. Let me just start with a question. We've received, sort of, at least for me, kind of laid in my analysis of your, or Rob Failey's memo, some other information that went at essentially trying to analyze the difference in cost to the homeowner who either needs or is being required by the town to go the grinder pump route versus the gravity homeowner, and a suggestion with respect to various aspects of that, including the cost of the grinder pump, but also maintenance and electricity and a whole bunch of other things that are in their analysis, this suggestion being in one fashion or another that the town pick up the difference, whatever the difference is. So you put all homeowners on the same plane, if you will. My question to you is, should I accept the recommendation that you're presenting today as having been the result of you're considering all of those aspects of the problem and rejecting them, or is this sort of the first step? Or how should we think about your recommendation vis-à-vis what we've heard from other folks who've done a pretty thorough analysis of the issue?
Yeah, good question. I'd suggest this is our first step in reviewing this. And as I mentioned before, because it was so complicated, in order to kind of break it down and focus on one aspect, this recommendation that we're making really relates to the pump acquisition, and not so much the ongoing operations and maintenance and how that might be able to be facilitated. So that's really another component that we need to continue to look at. But I think it's because of the amount of time we spent on this one particular issue, I thought it was important to bring this forward to you now, as we continue to study the other components associated with the operation of it.
Okay, well, just to follow up on that, I guess it's fair for me to assume that you did consider whether the town buy the grinder pumps or the homeowners buy them. How did you arrive at the decision to essentially go out and get the discount, but ask the homeowner to acquire, to pay for the grinder pump?
It was a difficult discussion that we had. And as Dean had mentioned before, one of the concerns was that who would benefit from that essentially free pump, if you will. And so that was, you know, I think that our committee was split in whether we would support the discount versus the free pump. And, you know, there was some, I think, thoughts on both sides, frankly, in the committee. And we could essentially agree unanimously that we need to at least provide that discount ability. But providing the free pump to homeowners was a step that we weren't prepared to recommend at this time, but doesn't mean that isn't something that shouldn't be considered in the future.
Okay. And I don't want to, I could go on here for the rest of the evening, and there are other people, I suspect, in the audience who are going to make a much more sophisticated and informed analysis of the thing that I've just referred to. I want to try to find a way to accept and appreciate and take advantage of the work and the recommendation you're giving tonight, but without prejudice to further work being done to look at the equity, first of all, the equity of people who need grinder pumps versus people who don't, and whoever they are. I would not distinguish between people who own two homes or who are summer residents or whatever, and full-time residents where this is concerned. And I would also ask that whatever we take as a first step tonight, be without prejudice to a more fulsome solution down the road. And finally, I would say that I'd like us to consider the issue of how it's paid for and who pays for it, that differential maybe as a separate issue. I mean, theoretically, there's the betterment approach that could be factored in as well. That's not entirely consistent with the idea of equity between grinder pump crowd and the non-grinder pump crowd, but I'd like to see if that can be worked in as well. So thanks very much, Jeff. I appreciate your work here.
Shereen?
Thanks, Jeff. Just a comment on the betterment idea. I remember when the water came through, we all had, the water was on a betterment and didn't impact. And I'm always very surprised that the sewer system, you know, the wastewater changeover and everything that people are dealing with isn't a betterment at this point, because it's costly. And it's costly to people that are living on fixed incomes. The equity issue is, you know, something that I'd rather, I'd like to explore a little more, too, because it just seems like, you know, you're asking a lot of folks here, about, I don't know, 300, 600,000 people to, you know, have grinder pumps and the rest not. So I'd like to really, really, just stemming a little off of what Jeff had said about the success of compliance, you know, with us, if we funded this in some way, whether it was, you know, an all-out purchase, whether that would be a more successful way to have people comply to hooking up. So I'm open to that. But appreciate the work that your committee did, Jeff, and we look forward to a continued conversation.
Well, obviously, this is a very complex discussion, and I'm looking forward to the comments that I'm expecting to be brought forth shortly. Equity is obviously one of the main focuses here. The one point you had mentioned earlier, which I don't want to get lost or have lost, is whether we buy the pumps ourselves, or we have this discounted program to have, you know, homeowners buy the certain same type of pump. I think having similar equipment throughout the prob system has benefit. So however it's paid for, that element alone holds weight. I completely agree with that. So it's, there's going to be a lot of struggling on philosophicals on this, you know. I think the recommendation as far as the purchasing of the pumps that was brought forward is basically a kind of a middle-ground type of compromise type of proposal. You're trying to be equitable to everyone, struggling both sides of the conversation. The latter part of the maintenance is going to be a much, much more difficult discussion, and I recognize that, and it's not something we're going to wrap up tonight. We know that for sure. But it's something that I would appreciate further discussion and weighing concepts on, because that opens up a whole other discussion of, you know, maintenance, prioritization of maintenance, future cost. We could get into a whole longer discussion on that element. But I guess more of the focus tonight is the grinder pumps and who's going to buy them, and, you know, is the rates and everything pretty much on par. So instead of me rambling for another 10 minutes, I'm going to open it up to public comment, see what we can get, in addition to the comments that were provided for in writing over the last couple of days. I will start with the in-house audience. Anyone from, yes, sir?
Good evening. I am Bob Burns. Live a full-time resident, live at 147 Lime Hill Road. And I appreciate for you're allowing us to make this presentation to the board. Hopefully you've had some time today to review some of the files that I forwarded. Number one was our position letter against this proposal. Number two was a draft of a grinder pump policy for the town. There is no policy in the town that's ever been written. Addition to presentations that we've made to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee with our research and recommendations. And lastly, an interactive 30-year Excel spreadsheet, meaning interactive. Anybody can work on it, plug it in, but it includes everything: cost, maintenance, replacing the pump. So that should be worked on. As our Lime Hill and Christopher Harding homeowner group knew very little about low-pressure lines, in our future with grinder pumps, we set out to become educated. We never understood why our neighborhood and adjoining streets were relegated to have low pressure, since many properties have a high elevation. We learned that a low-pressure system has considerable disadvantages to gravity feed systems. Just about every Chatham resident has no idea what a grinder pump installation entails, from the $8,000 cost of the pump to the cost of the electrical connection to run the pump, and the possibility of needing a very expensive service upgrade. If your home doesn't have enough electric capacity to handle an additional 30-amp circuit and 6,500 watts of startup usage, you're in trouble. To the $6,000 to $12,000 cost of installation for the pump, the cost of service and maintenance at $500 per service call. Two, a $3,000 core replacement at the pump's end of life in 10 to 15 years, and an annual $100 cost for electricity. Bottom line, there is an average upfront cost difference of at least $10,000 to the homeowner between installing pressure, low-pressure grinder versus a gravity connection. The grinder pumps are restrictive in that nothing but body waste and toilet paper can enter the system without causing system failure. Gravity systems are far less restrictive. The pumps do not work during power outages unless the homeowner has a working generator. The grinder pump has a 30-gallon reservoir for waste. In the case of a power failure, there may be only a gallon or two of the capacity remaining. You simply don't know how much is left in the tank when the power goes out. Unless they have a generator, the homeowner cannot rely Unless they have a generator, the homeowner cannot rely on the grinder pump at any point during an outage. The scenario is real for anyone with a grinder pump, but residents lucky enough to have a gravity system would never have to worry about this. As you can imagine, no one is enthusiastic about this, and there will be 1,000 Chatham homeowners over the next 16 years having to install grinder pumps. Most likely, the second-most installations of any town on the Cape, behind Falmouth, will have, will have 1,200. We also spoke with over 20 municipalities about policy and researched many more. The general consensus was that although low-pressure pressure systems can result in significant savings, the municipalities have learned that the savings may not be worth the aggravation in future costs. As much more towns such as Chatham are now endeavoring to utilize gravity feed lines wherever possible on any expansion despite the higher costs. The large majority of towns who mandate a town sewer connection pay for the pump and provide maintenance at no cost to the homeowner. Falmouth also compensates the homeowner $1,800 separate payment for the higher installation costs. Chatham is saving a substantial sum of money on construction costs when low-pressure sewers are installed instead of gravity sewers, from the cost of deeper excavation for sewer lines and therefore less expensive for street repairs to less pumping stations required by gravity systems. We are not asking for a handout for Chatham homeowners. We are asking for one simple thing, financial equity for property owners who require grinder pumps. We expected that Chatham would be fair with policy and recognize that homes on low-pressure lines are at a disadvantage. So now I think it's understandable that we are not astonished, that we were astonished, excuse me, to learn that not only are we saddled with an inferior sorcery, but also the Sewer Advisory Board has proposed homeowners pay for the pumps. And insulation on all future, and insulation in all future service and maintenance. We are all taxpayers, and we should all bear the same cost burden of the new sewer system equally. And as such, we vehemently oppose the unfair proposal put forward by the Sewer Advisory Committee and the DPW. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. David.
David Oppenheimer, Abseghammy Run, I've lived here over 50 years. I thought it was a great presentation that was just made. The Lime Hill Association has done an enormous amount of research. When we passed the sewer at town meeting, it was about equity. It was said over and over again, every part of town benefits from a sewer system because the nitrates are less and whether, whenever it's done, we all benefit because our abeyments or the waterways, everything are going to be safer and better. That's why I went on the tax rate. I'm not sure it shouldn't have been a betterment, but that's what we decided to do. It was, we were going to tack the most at-risk areas, you know, when it tends to be over in, like, Abseghammy Run or Lime Hill, different areas like that. Downtown, fortunately, has had a sewer system for years and years. It was always stated that areas like North Chatham, maybe Eastwood Hoas and things like that, would be way down the line, maybe not even ever. It might not be necessary. It was also the possibility if you have IA systems, which would give you the same equity of another bedroom if you had this. Equity is why it passed. And the, how did it work with the gravity system? They very, very few conversations when this was being sold to the town was about grinder pumps, because it was going to be mostly gravity systems and gravity systems to install. Once you install it, you're done. So I'm going to give you a few examples of things that happened. And they installed the low-pressure system in Abseghammy Run, I want to say five or six years ago, roughly correct. We met with Dr. Duncanson at the time, who wanted to, who approached the Abseghammy Association about, because originally it was going to be a gravity system, but how they would rather do a pressure system. We, I would have to say at this point in time, we were a little naive at the time because the pumps weren't that expensive, et cetera, et cetera, and things were a lot less expensive. And it was, they were going to repave our road as an additional cost to help offset the savings. Mr. Duncanson told us eventually that after everything it would save the town to do Abseghammy Run, even with the paving, hundreds of thousands of dollars. It turned out to be north of half a million dollars on a 21-lot subdivision. Everybody has to have grinder pumps. Now, when it was going to be a gravity system in Abseghammy, there were two and possibly three houses that were not gravity. All the other ones would have been gravity. One is the house at the very end of the cul-de-sac, which is down low and would have had to pump up. And one is my own house, where I have a 600-foot-long driveway, and we were fully prepared and will be fully prepared to always knowing we're going to pump to the gravity system. My daughter's house, which is at the end of my driveway, easy, easy gravity feed, 70 feet from the edge of the house to where the connection was. And it would have been an easy run because we didn't have to move the plumbing. Sometimes you have to move the plumbing in the house to accommodate it to wherever you're going out. We didn't have to do that, but we went to, we had to go to a grinder pump. We did that roughly two years ago. Duba's family did it. It was much more money than we thought it was, it was going to be originally, much more money than it was going to be had we just done a gravity, because the engineering is more expensive, the wiring is more expensive. Fortunately, my daughter's house had a 200-amp service, so we didn't have to upgrade a service. One of our residents just had to upgrade his service to 200, and I think that cost something over $3,000 just to get the service big enough to service the pump. We were told way back then that if the power went out, you would have three, four, or five flushes a day or something like that, which we all laughed at because that was baloney. It was baloney then, and it's baloney now. The reality is, in a gravity system, if your power's out, you can flush your toilet, you can go to the bathroom. If you have a propane heater, you can live in your house, and everybody can live there. Don't forget, septic systems are designed based on two people in every bedroom 365 days of the year. You have a family of three or four living in a house of three, and your power goes out for two days, you're not living in your house, unless you have a generator. At my daughter's house, we added a generator, and for a number of reasons. You could put a smaller generator in just to take care of the pump. But the upgrade from a, say, an eight or 10 kilowatt to a 15-kilowatt generator is a nominal cost, and that adds to the, allows your heat to run and everything else to run in your house. So they're really not talking about, it's not the pump, it's not just the electricity. If you don't have a generator and the power is out for more than the power, you're leaving your house because you can't go to the bathroom. It's not true. So what we're hearing is just not true. I wish that we had been smarter in, because Abseghammy could have actually been done gravity, but we tried to be cooperative, we made a mistake. Now everybody's going to have grinder pumps. Again, several of us expected it right from the start because of the length of our driveway or substantially below grade. Every other house except perhaps one, because of distance, would have been gravity feed. I'm building a house on Stage Harbor Road. It's right across from the Outwood House, it's a spec house. We just hooked up to the, about three months ago, we hooked up to the sewer. It was from the house, brand new house, so the plumbing's where it was supposed to be out to the connection. It was $3,200 to run the pipe. They'll never have another expense. Everything's going to go downhill into that nice gravity system. The idea that it costs more to dig down deeper to get to a gravity system is de minimis in terms of, it's no, it's no money at all compared to what it costs to put these systems in. I still believe in the sewer system, but I believe in what the original premise was, which was equity. So if this town of Chatham saved $500,000 putting in Abseghammy Run as a pressure system as opposed to gravity, and there's going to be 21 pumps, 19 extra, and we're talking $10,000 if they paid for every single one of those pumps, do the math, the town still saved a lot of money. The whole town, the equity was, the equity was passed on to the whole town. If the town doesn't pay for those pumps or pay for the extra cost of installation and operation, then they've taken the equity, spread, the savings, and spread it all to taxpayers and put that cost on a minority of people. When they start talking about 1,000 people are going to be on these pumps potentially, and maybe less depending on where we can do, there may be other places we can do gravity feed, that, how much time is that going to take? What did you say? There's 32 in town now. We've had the sewer system being installed for the last 10 years, there's only 32. And now, we just got notices a year, roughly a year ago, that we have another, two years to hook up to the system in Abseghammy, otherwise we'll be subject to a $250 a day fine. I'm not too concerned about that because I'd like to think that our town is not so crass that they, or uncaring that they would actually install that. The other thing that has come up is you looked at, and I'm going to use Abseghammy, it's a pretty expensive subdivision, but a lot of the people that live in Abseghammy have lived there for 25, 30 years. They bought their houses, one house, for example, was bought almost 28 years ago, and I think the price was right around $300,000. That house may be worth $2 million, 200, I don't actually know now what it's worth, but I happen to know that there are people in Abseghammy Run that don't know if they have enough money to do this. Where are they going to get the money? They've got their home, they didn't, they didn't pay 2 or 3 million, they've been here for 30 years. Maybe they were part-time residents who have retired here. And now to suddenly look not at 10 or 12,000, even with a $6,000 pump, you are looking at so that they can live the way they've lived 30 years, so they can stay in their house and use their toilets in a power outage. They're looking at an expense of 25 to $30,000. That's what the real numbers are. I don't care what this study committee's done. We've done it, we've done it over and over again, and that's just not true. The pump is a fixed price, but it's going to cost for electricity if they can, a perfect, another perfect example, my daughter's house. If you don't, one of the things I've been told by our installer is the water's, you can't leave them for the whole winter just sitting there, well, you could with a gravity system, because if you don't fill it with water, it'll get clogged up. Stuff will stick, it'll become like plaster inside. So we have, whether it's my wife or I, or occasionally where we have other people, we go into that house at least once a week and flush all the toilets and turn on the sinks to make sure water's flowing through this lovely pump, that if it doesn't, it will clog up and then we may have a problem. I think it's great that they're studying it, and I think that you should spend a lot of time reading that Lime Hill. That is one of the most comprehensive things I've seen done. And it talks about equity, and it talks about real costs, and I think you add, one thing you better add, which is in there, I didn't look at every bit of it, but there's a lot of it, add a generator to every one of those, because without a generator, your quality of life is not the same as before you put the stupid septic system in. And, I mean, I'm sorry, a sewer system. So I think it is what's fair and what should be considered is everything being paid for over and above the cost of going in. I think that the maintenance costs on some basis should be paid for, or the replacement, whether it's 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, certainly if somebody, part of it should be an education system, so when, if the town pays for it, you tell people how, what you have to do to maintain it. I saw in one of the things that the town is responsible unless there's negligence by the homeowner, because in the end, by installing, what I think was correctly said, a less efficient system, which, other than the cost of installation, which is, which is the pressure system, which saves the town millions and millions of dollars over the years, the least they can do is take this, 32 people, maybe 15 or 20 or 30 years from now, it'll be 1,000, it'll probably be a lot less, because I don't think, we don't really know what's going to happen in other parts of town. It's the least the town can do. So my recommendation is, because I think everybody's really looking at this for the first time hard, because I think it's pointed out, and I, you know, I consider myself really knowledgeable on what's going on in town. I don't remember all these discussions about grinder pumps on the town meeting floor and the excess costs of things like this, when we were talking about saving our environment, keeping, making our environment better. Our environment should be protected by everybody in town through the tax rate and done correctly. So my recommendation is to temporarily suspend all required hookups. If somebody wants to hook up and take advantage of a discounted thing and put it in now, they'd still be able to come back when a policy is in place retroactively and get any other benefits that are provided. And stop with requiring people hooked up to a system until we've studied it and find out what isn't truly equitable. To give the time necessary for a thorough review of the costs, the inequity caused by the alternatives, including the true cost of taking care of the difference, which includes generators, maintenance, electricity, upgrading of your electrical system and everything else. I find it, as the gentleman from Lime Hill, offensive that the town is willing to give us a discount. Oh, boy. What a deal. We gave in Abseghammy, we gave the town a $500,000 discount. And it'd be nice to get, for the 20 houses, if you got back the $6,000, that's 120,000 back, the town still is better off by $380,000. I think, I think that's the way to go. And I strongly recommend that you don't take any action on this at this point, other than to let people take advantage, if they want to hook up, of potentially using the discount, but with the caveat that they, when a policy, a proper policy is put in place that recognizes equity and finally puts into place so that it recognizes that those of us that live on other parts of, those that live on other parts of town that may, none, in none of our lifetimes ever have sewer, but are still deriving the benefit, are helping to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Nickerson.
My name's Creighton Nickerson. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. I live on 22 Uncle Albert's Drive, and I'm required to have a grinder pump. I've got a low-pressure main that runs out through the road. When they decided to put the sewer down the road, we were never told they were going to put low pressure in. Everybody just assumes it's going to be gravity feed. Now, I'm all for sewer, don't get me wrong there, but a mechanical thing is made to break. I don't care how simple it is, it will break down. Are you fine? You want to give us a five-year possible warranty on it? Six years, it'll cost you at least a minimum of $300 just to get the people to come down to look at the pump to find out what's the matter with it, then the replacement parts. So you're probably going to end up costing you probably 15 to $2,000. I'm lucky that I got a standby generator, but after what I've heard tonight from Mr. Oppenheimer and Mr. Burns, you may require a 15 or a 20 KW generator. I got a 10 KW generator, which means I probably would have to update that. That'd be another $10, $12,000 or more. And my feeling is, and the closest statement I've heard that I'm a little bit agreeable with, but I still think the town should be buying the pumps outright with Mr. Schell's statement about maybe doing something on the betterment, you know, figure they're maybe paying like $600 a year off your, have $600 a year off your taxes for 10 years or something like that to make up the $6,000. Far as I'm concerned, if these pumps are so great, they should be warranted, warranted for life. If after 10 years they go, the town's responsible to fix it, not the homeowner. I'm not a, I'm not a rich person. I didn't make a million dollars a year. I don't live in a $5-million house. Anybody who wants to come up to my road, Uncle Albert's Drive, right behind the liquor locker, I'm the first house on the right-hand side. It's a nondescript house, three-bedroom, two-bath, garage under, on a quarter-acre lot. Simple, but I can't afford the Simple, but I can't afford to put in, you know, 20, $25,000 system, that I've never lived there, recuperate my investment in on it. Yeah, other than that, um, I'm for the sewer, but I'm not for the price. I feel the town should pick up the total cost of the grinder pump, and they should be, after, you know, if they don't want to do that, do the other, you know, the embedment, whatever, but, uh, the town should pick up the total repair service, you know, regardless after that. It, you know, a gravity feed would admit a lot simpler and a lot cheaper versus, uh, you know, six or seven or $8,000 for a pump, and then the hook-in, you're probably looking at another four grand to do that, so you're looking at around $12,000 minimum, minimum, more likely more. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Creighton. Uh, there was another, um, yes, sir, then Eugene.
Hi, my name is Michael Brown, I live on Abseghammy Run. I won't take up too much time, I just want to throw out a few figures or clarify a few figures. First of all, what's a gravity pump cost today? To buy it from FR Mahoney, who's a local distributor, is $8,000 with a two-year warranty. Jeff mentioned $10,000 with a five-year warranty. I have my suspicions about $10,000 with an additional three-year warranty. $8,000 with a two-year warranty, number one, clarification. Number two, $6,000, as David would say, whoopee, $2,000 off an $8,000 figure, but it's not really that, because if the homeowner buys a $6,000 pump, they've got to pay the sales tax, and a Lime Hill resident who did buy a E1 pump, it cost him $600 transportation cost. So roughly, another $1,000 onto the $6,000, so now we're talking, it's really a $7,000 purchase by a homeowner. Mr. Nickerson was, threw out an alarming number, that, to, for, and I'm not sure, I don't believe he, he referenced the company who would drive to Chatham to do a service call, but Mr. Nickerson mentioned it would be $300. As Mr. Colby's, um, documentation would show, it's not $300, it's $500 to drive here. And then, there's a cost to fix it. That's a lot of money. Mr. Oppenheim also underestimated a cost to upgrade electrical system. My neighbor on Abseghammy Run installed a grinder pump because he needed to do so, and found out that his 100-amp service was not sufficient. He upgraded to a 200-amp system. The cost, and unfortunately, even though his house was 40 feet from the road, the excavation had to go around his house to get into the basement, where the electrical service, the old electrical panel was and all that. And I have this documentation, I'll be glad to share it with you, if you'd like it, if my neighbor would agree. Cost to excavate, labor, and the electrical panel, $13,500. This town, Chatham, is filled with older homes, obviously, and some of her, some are occupied by some older residents. Not only are they going to have a shock when they find out how much grinder systems cost, they're going to get a shock when they find out their houses can't run a grinder system. Now, nobody's suggesting, or even, in the wildest imagination, suggests that Chatham pay for upgrading electrical systems, that's simply a non-starter and no one, no one would even bring that up. But, there has to be a starting point at some point, and I got the sense during the discussions between Jeff and the board, that, you know, maybe we, we go ahead at this point with, with something, and in the future, you know, figure out maybe a, a different way of handling this. The future is now, let's figure out how to do it now, and do it the right way now, and just, um, do the right thing for residents. All we're asking for, as Bob mentioned, was equity. The people with grinder pumps are going to live with something that they really don't want to live with, and there's going to be a hue and cry when the people in Chatham find out about what really grinder pumps mean. Just this week, a, a note, a noted professional and, um, business owner in, in Chatham was talking with Bob, and Bob says, well, you know about grinder pumps, whatever, and he started the conversation by, it sounded, he, he thought he knew about it, until he didn't know about it. This is going to be a big, big issue, and it needs to be done the right way, starting now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, Mr. Dubus, then we're going to pivot to online, I see a couple of hands being popped up, so.
Gene Dubus, Nine Valley 5 Drive. I agree with a lot that everybody has said. Buying the grinder pump is the first issue that the people that have to have a grinder pump come up with. We install probably 25 of the 30 pumps that are in town, I would say half of them, they had to upgrade their electrical service, and the $8,000 to $10,000 is the more realistic number to upgrade. We just did one where they were 300 feet from their nearest telephone pole, upgrade their electrical service was 20-something thousand dollars on top of buying these grinder pumps. Now, there's areas in town where the town is putting low-pressure, where I think they could put a package treatment plant in, and make a gravity to the, to the treatment plant, and then have one line going out. I think that would have been a great spot at Abseghammy, where they put one pump chamber in that the town installs, everybody goes gravity to that and they pump it out. The problem with Abseghammy is they would have had a river crossing and stuff to do gra, to do a, a gravity down there, to get the permits for that, we're going to probably be crazy. So let's go back, should the town be buying the grinder pumps? I absolutely agree, the town should buy the grinder pumps for the people that are, have to have them. I think the town can look better at their planning and make less low-pressure lines than they are, they're thinking that maybe their, uh, packaged treatment plants are a half a million dollars, but if we're going to buy the grinder pumps that have issues, and every 10 years we're going to be upgrading them, we're going to be there anyways. So I, I think the town in their designing of the system should look a little bit more into what the town can do when they're putting the, the pipes in the ground. The generators issue, every control panel has a plug where you can hook a portable generator up to it to pump your, your liquids down, so you're not 100% stuck, but you do need to drag out a generator to turn your, uh, treatment plant on to pump your level down, and every 30 or 40 gallons, you got to do it again. Now, I'm sure some of these older people that are in town are not going to want to be jacking around a generator out to make their grinder pump go. So, I think equitable, the town should buy the grinder pumps. Upgrading electrical services, I think that's going to be on the homeowner, and down the line, I don't know what they want to do about putting a, a second grinder pump if they fail, but I, I do believe we have to buy the first one, and I have, I just want to go down another line, because I know you're looking at it a little bit. I have a house in Florida, and where I am there, they, it's all grinder pumps. The community buys the grinder pumps, they, they get them installed, and they have on a computer database every grinder pump. I was down there this fall, and I had an issue with my grinder pump, and I'm going, oh, no, what am I going to do, I'm in Florida, I don't know anybody down here. Within an hour, the community came out with a technician, because they're all on a computer, they could see on the computer screen that my pump was having an issue, they had a tech come out and change the pump within an hour. I don't know what that total cost is for everybody, but it, it was unbelievable to see how that worked, and we're a long ways away from that in Chatham. Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Dubus. Yep.
Question, Eugene?
Yeah.
So, uh, I want to get to the issue of equity. So, what about the person who is connecting to a, is, is directed by the Board of Health to connect to a gravity system, but because of topography or distance, is going to need a grinder pump? Do you think that person should be included, as well as the people that are on a low-pressure?
That's a gray area, because if your house is down in a hole, and there was no way that gravity could ever work for that guy, whose house is 10 feet below the road, but like the other people said, we're all benefiting the environment. So, you know, I think just buy the first grinder pump for everybody, and then, that's a start anyways, and I know the, they're, they're looking at going maybe deeper into it and overseeing the pumps so that you know there's issues, and, but that, you know, that's a whole nother kettle of worms.
So, so another equity question, I appreciate the answer, another equity question. The person who's connecting with gravity doesn't need a grinder pump, but the house is set back so far, that it's going to cost a lot more than the $3,200 that Mr. Oppenheim, I think that was the number he gave. Does that, do you think that person overall should be subsidized by the taxpayer? Because we heard the figure $1,800 difference, I'm just getting it, equity is-
Yeah, equity is equity.
For everybody.
Uh, David's $3,200 figure is installing a sewer line on a brand-new house, no restoration of the yard, no, no getting rid of the old system, which the, the other person is going to have to get rid of, because when you do a new sewer system, you, you're working on the existing house, so you got to get, you got to pump and fill the old system, and then you have to restore the yard. His yard didn't have to be restored, so it was just digging backfill. So his is on the low end of the equation, so the medium end of the equation is maybe $10,000 for a gravity system, and $20,000 to $25,000 for an E1 system. So there's the balance, is the 25 for the E1 and the 10 for a gravity. Now, if this guy lives and he can still get gravity, and he's 200 feet from the road, that, that's a gray area, and I, and I understand that.
And you may also have to replumb your house.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, thank you for answering those.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. I'm going to pivot, go on, go online, we have a couple of hands up.
Sure, we have Elaine Gibbs and Bob Salter.
All right, Elaine, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. I was involved in the sewer back in 2010, when the town approved it, and grinder pumps were very, very much a big part of the conversation in terms of, uh, topography, and in terms of, um, the need for low-pressure lines, and the town approved it. And, uh, we were opposed to it, we thought alternative systems in certain areas like Abseghammy would have been perfect, where there was an alternative system, um, because the grinder pumps are huge, and they do have problems, particularly in residences that are unoccupied. Um, I, I think there's a problem here with the data in terms of, one of the things it says is estimated future grinder pumps through 2030, which is the balance of Phase 1, 2, 342. The problem with that is we are not going to complete the sewer system by, Phase 1 by 2030. There are 7,600 properties that need to be sewed, two-thirds were supposed to be done by, uh, 2030, that would mean 5,300 properties. With the work that has been done, and the work that is in progress, that's only going to be 1,350 homes after 13 years. Uh, and that means we're only at 26% of the collection system and infrastructure and pump stations have been put in place. So, uh, the other, I think, germane number is that there are 88 miles of gravity sewers in town proposed, and 18 miles of low-pressure. That was in the comprehensive plan. Uh, I can't find anywhere how much we have already put in in terms of low-pressure, in terms of mileage, I think that would be an, an, an interesting, you know, have we put in five miles of low-pressure? I think that one of the things we should do, I think this is premature, we need to know how much the sewer's going to cost us. We still don't have those numbers, we spent $100 million excluding the wastewater treatment facilities since 2012, to basically, um, sewer, have the infrastructure in place for 1,350 properties. That would, extrapolation would tell me, we've got 2, 3, 400 million to go before we finish Phase 1. I would also say that, um, there are some unintended consequences of this, I think the first thing we have to do is go and find out how much the sewer's going to cost if we want to reduce nitrogen levels, and some of the inequities, I think Dean mentioned some of them, you know, water and sewer are two of the biggest expenses we're going to have moving forward. Uh, I think that in this situation, you're saying 6 million now, uh, but that number's going to grow, because we're not going to get those, we're not going to have the infrastructure in place for those 342 by 2030. So that six number, million number could grow to 9 million by the time these people actually have the collection system in front of their houses. I think one of the first things we should do is relook where we should, instead of trying to save money on low-pressure, to put in gravity instead, and so that it is a more equitable, um, cost for everybody, rather than this, uh, kind of Band-Aid approach that we're using here, and that would get a lot of these people who are potentially going to be on grinder pumps not to have to have them, if we put in the gravity systems. But some of the other inequities that I think we have to consider is that everybody's situation is different, and everybody has significant expenses as it relates to water and sewer. It, it was mandated that as of 2019, nobody could hook into, uh, town water for irrigation anymore, so they had to put in a well, but people can't afford a well in many situations, they might have to dig, you know, 150 feet, and so, that's an expense for them, if they want to not lose all their vegetation, you're talking 20, 30,000 there. We're lots, uh, from the, the stub. The cost for people to have to run the pipes from the stub all the way to their properties, probably have to replumb their homes, all the damage to their landscaping and vegetation could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I appreciate that this is one of the situations, but I don't think we can go and make policy decisions that we're buying onto this long-term, when we don't know what the financial implications are for all of the water and sewer issues that are facing every single one of us. Uh, and, um, I, I think that, uh, one of the other issues is that, you know, if you're going on the assumption that you're going to need 400, 500 of these things, and we buy them for $6 million, number one, where are they going to be stored? And number two, what happens if we don't use them? When does the warranty start? If it starts from the day we sign the contract, by the time they go in, the contract could have expired, you know, they're not going to let them sit in a warehouse, I don't think, for five years while the extended warranty is, is, is expiring. And, and again, I have a serious concern about saying that the town, we have never done that, where we have taken over financial responsibility from the stub on private property, because you would be in litigation, the town would be in litigation, for a homeowner saying, I did what I was supposed to, but these grinder pumps are notorious, if you don't live there, I, I think people have mentioned what the issues are. They freeze up, they can back up, um, but we all- They freeze up, they can back up, but we all need generators for a whole variety of things. So, I don't think you can count, you know, the generator cost as being an added expense. We all have got to do that because we're losing power all the time. So, I would like to see the town say, not wait. I think the town manager had said she's asked Water and Sewer to look into the costs, you know, for the sewer that we have yet to do, but it wouldn't even be on the warrant until 2026. We gotta, we gotta speed this process up and find out how much it's gonna cost and then deal with this issue as to how we can avoid the use of grinder pumps. And I think, you know, and put in that equation how much it's gonna cost to, instead of using low pressure to save money, to put in gravity. And then we would eliminate this concern and the downsides and the potential future exorbitant costs. I have a feeling that 6 million is gonna go up to 9, 10 million and these units will go up much higher by the time we have put in the collection systems on those 18 miles and gotten to a point where people can even connect. So, the other thing, find out where those 18 miles are, where the low pressure is going and see if that can be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. One more name?
We have Bob Salter.
Bob, go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you. I live at 169 Lime Hill Road and I agree with all the prior speakers and I can attest to the costs because I just put in a grinder pump in my yard. It was around $8,000 and around $3,000 for the electrical hookup and another $5,000 to get electrical backup to power it. But what, one of the things that Elaine just alluded to that I haven't really heard discussed was the decision on grinder pumps was made back in 2010 when the design of the sewer system was implemented and when the grants were received by the town for implementing it and for the nitrogen reduction plan, which I 100% support. And when you go on the Chatham website and you search grinder pump, you find two interesting One is a question and answer back from 2010. And if I can quote one of the questions, it's who pays for installs and maintains the grinder pumps? And the answer back in 2010 was, propose town policies that the town will purchase and install the grinder pump. This will require the property owner granting an access construction easement. The property owner will then be responsible for maintenance and ongoing electrical costs. So, I'm having a big problem resolving this Q and A back from 2010 with the recommendation from the Water and Sewer Committee. And I have to commend Bob Burns for his patience and for his due diligence in putting all that document together and giving that on a regular basis to the Town Sewer and Advisory Committee. But I have to say, I was very shocked and to quote David Oppenheim, a bit slapped in the face when I saw what the actual recommendation was. Because I went to not all the meetings, but I went to a few and back then they were saying, well, you know, if the town is sending a legal document requiring a town owner, a homeowner to connect to the sewer system, then we should be buying the pump for them. And those were things that were said during that committee. So, I have to say, I was really surprised by the recommendation from the committee. And I'm also surprised that when I went to go find the recommendation online, I don't see anything online. I don't see any minutes posted from their meeting. So, those are, besides agreeing with all the prior people, I don't want to tie up a lot more time, but those are additional things that I think should go on the record. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, circle back to the board. A lot of comments, very much appreciated comments. That's a lot of information to process and it focuses on the complexity of these issues. But thoughts from the board? Mike?
Yeah, I come back to the question I asked Jeff. Is there a way to move forward with their recommendation as a first step that doesn't prejudice any of the work that I think pretty obviously needs to be done? As I've listened to the presentations from the various people, I reluctantly conclude that I don't think that we can really act on that recommendation without having a more comprehensive look at the problem and updating of where we are today as opposed to where we were 10 years ago, more than 10 years ago in 2010. And I guess my bottom line would be that this needs to be looked at more comprehensively. And I think that that includes an answer to the question that David Oppenheim asked or suggested, namely a moratorium on mandates to install or to connect to the system while this gets worked out.
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My suggestion would be to refer this back to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee for review of their recommendation in light of the comments tonight. As for a moratorium, I don't think that's within the jurisdiction of the Select Board. That's up to the Board of Health. They're the ones that issue the orders to connect. And my understanding is they have been very lenient in terms of granting people delays. And if the Select Board feels that there should be a moratorium, we can request that of the Board of Health. But I don't think that's really for us to do it. But I think if it is referred back to committee, that the direction should be for the committee to consider equity in all its forms, not just with respect to those on low-pressure systems. And I think also, and I don't know enough about the engineering of this, but Mr. Dubas' suggestion about reviewing the design plans, and Elaine spoke to this as well, as to whether those areas that are contemplated for low-pressure systems could be changed over to gravity in the planning. I think that shouldn't be looked at if that is at all possible. My understanding is that Dubas probably knows more about the layout of the town sewer system than many other people. So, I think it's worth, I think his comment merits some further consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are my thoughts.
Sharon?
After hearing everybody, I didn't hear how that this was a very equitable process at all at this point. And it really, really, I have notes and notes and notes of all the complications around the grinder pump and the questions being raised on, you know, specifics around the design side of what we've been doing. And, you know, I'm not someone who wants to blow up an entire system, but I think that a recommendation of the Board of Health to consider a moratorium to weed this out might be a good place to be, sending it back to Water and Sewer to look at. I just, this is, this has just raised more questions than answers and, you know, I'm a little befuddled as to, you know, what we can, what our next steps except for what I just said to do.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Corey. And thanks to all the folks that spoke this evening, very articulate and very thoughtful and the work that a lot of our citizens have done. I'm one to think that we need to remand this to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, number one. Number two, if we were to suggest anything to the Board of Health, I think a moratorium on grinder pump or low-pressure systems might be most appropriate, but not a moratorium on gravity feed systems that are already in the planning stages and that are fairly inexpensive and that are gonna be successful. I don't think we need to certainly pour any cold water on those types of systems if folks are ready to go. We have a lot of work to do and I think this has raised a lot more questions, to be honest with you. And I do, as I said earlier, I do lean towards a very, very equitable approach to this because I think in the long run, what we're gonna get is a better sewer system and a better environment and better saltwater estuaries and freshwater here in this town. So, a lot of work to be done. Again, I don't profess to have all the answers, but we've certainly raised many, many issues. And the one question, overarching question that I have is what, in the installed base thus far, what percentage or what mileage of low pressure has been already planned versus what is planned for gravity? I don't know that and I would like to know that. Because I think that's important to our future considerations. But I think an investment for homeowners in this town and grinder pumps and perhaps beyond is a worthy investment because it's only gonna secure a better environment for us all. Thanks.
Thank you. As was stated at the beginning of this conversation, this is a very complex discussion topic. I could recommend, I could support bringing this back to Water and Sewer for their review. I am more of the philosophical opinion of the town paying for the grinders, but obviously looking at how to broaden that equity component so it's not just limited to those who are getting the grinders. So, that is one part of the conversation. The second part, which Mr. Colby mentioned, you know, the maintenance and the secondary element of this bigger conversation, I think that's gonna be a much more complex discussion. But I have some reservations about having the town take up the maintenance of this. I think there's some issues and unforeseen consequences of doing something like that. So, I hate to use that term, but I do think we need to look long and hard at what that might mean and how that may be approached. So, I'm not quite ready to jump on board on any decision with the maintenance on that right now. But if we want to, as a board, send this back to Water and Sewer as one motion and then, as Ms. Davidson mentioned, maybe we make a recommendation to the Board of Health as a secondary motion. I'd be comfortable with either one. So, with that, Dean, do you have a motion?
I was going to propose a consolidated motion.
Okay.
And I'm gonna try to take into account what others have said. So, I move that we remand this issue back to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee for further consideration in light of discussion tonight at the Select Board meeting. And also, I refer a recommendation, I'm sorry, refer a request to the Board of Health that they consider imposing a moratorium on grinder pump connections pending consideration by the town of a grinder pump policy.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Mike?
I'd just like to modify one feature, tiny feature of your motion, which with respect to the request to the Board of Health, that make room for if a homeowner desires to go forward with a grinder pump connection, that they're allowed to do so, that the moratorium doesn't prevent everybody from doing that if they want to.
I'll accept that as part of the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right. Thank you very much for all that discussion, folks. Last item on our agenda, consider amendments to Select Board Meeting Public Participation Policy and Public Announcements and Agenda Request Policy as recommended by Town Council. Our town manager present this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I had asked Town Council to review our two policies related to the Select Board Meeting Participation and the Public Announcements and Agenda Request Policy to make sure that it aligns with the recent Supreme Court SJC decision for Baron and Kalenda, Baron versus Kalenda, for public participation at public meetings. And so, what I asked Town Council to do is look at our existing policies and redline them consistent with the court case. We do have Pat Costello online with us and I certainly welcome his input to turf it over to him.
All right, Pat?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
As Jill noted, back in the spring of 2023, the Supreme Judicial Court rendered a decision in the Baron v. Kalenda case, which stemmed from a dispute during a Select Board's hearing in a town in central Massachusetts. And what the court did was basically render a decision that indicated that towns cannot require or compel certain types of conduct or behavior at public meetings, particularly during sessions of meetings when the public is invited to submit comments. The court basically indicated that you can't compel the type of behavior that those citizens attending meetings must comport with. They have a right under the 19th and 16th Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution to freely assemble and to free speech during these hearings. And that free speech doesn't have to be pleasant, likable, or suit the needs of those town officials whose meeting is being conducted. The guidelines that I've redlined, as Jill noted, basically incorporate certain standards that have been promulgated by the Baron v. Kalenda decision for public meetings. Most notably, the SJC by no means indicated that meetings should be allowed to go off the rails, so to speak. It certainly does acknowledge the fact that boards do have a right to control their meetings such that they are orderly and peaceable. Those are the terms that the court used, so I specifically incorporated those into your policy. And those terms, quite frankly, are, have been incorporated into a number of municipal board policies since this decision has issued. The open comment sessions of meetings are afforded a significant amount of leeway because citizens certainly have the right to participate in their governments. They have a right to make their views and positions known to elected and appointed town officials. Those positions do not have to be, do not have to fit within the rigors or the parameters of a policy that the board established. So long as their viewpoints and their actions at these meetings do not interfere with the conduct or orderly or civil conduct of the meeting, then there's a feeling in the SJC's view that local officials, board members, chairs do not have the right to restrict those particular statements or actions other than within the well-recognized First Amendment context of time, place, and manner. You do maintain the right to regulate input based on the time, place, and manner of that input. That is scheduling a certain section of meetings when public comments may be had, which the board does, most boards do when they have public comment, public input sections. And you can certainly address and regulate the means by which the message is delivered by requiring speakers to identify themselves prior to speaking and so forth. But once those broad parameters of time, place, and manner have been addressed, the ability of a board to restrict the nature or content of comment that is submitted to it by citizens is regulated very heavily by our constitution and by the federal constitution. And the Baron v. Kalenda decision, for the first time, quite frankly- And the Baron v. Colenda decision, for the first time, quite frankly, addressed the parameters of Article 19, the right to assembly in Massachusetts, and within the context of, of municipal meeting. And it, it was a very, very significant decision from, from a public perspective. Now, the decision, while it certainly did have a very significant impact on how public meetings got to be conducted, also left a lot of questions unanswered or unresolved. The court did not need to address many issues that certainly could be spawned or could spring from the application of the court's ruling in that particular decision. That's why it's important for boards such as the Select Board to adopt policies that you have in writing that clearly establish the parameters for conduct at your meetings that comply with the Baron v. Colenda mandates, yet also provide an outline for citizens to understand how their, their comment and their activity at these meetings will be regulated. So I feel very comfortable with the proposed revisions to both of your policies, the, the public comment policy as well as the public announcement and agenda request policy, which, which do somewhat go hand in hand in terms of how your meetings are conducted. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in that regard.
Thank you, Pat. I had one question, and I'm going to make a comment. I was asked, and actually very curious, in the, when you, when a speaker steps up to the podium and identifies themselves by name and address, what is the, I guess, definition of address as far as a requirement is? Can I say Corey Metters, Chatham, or do I have to say the name of the road, name of the road of my house? Like, I guess there was the question, citizen that approached me, said about privacy, some limited representation of privacy, and if there was ever some recourse against their comments. I go, what is the expectation of the term address?
That's certainly something, Corey, that has not been defined specifically by case law or by statute. So I think that is the type of a, a manner restriction that would fall within the discretion of your board. I mean, if it is, the, the reason that that particular question is often asked is because these citizen comment or citizen input sessions of meetings are specifically reserved so that citizens of the town can address your board. So it's merely a, an introductory statement that establishes first and foremost who the individual is, and secondly, to your point, that they live in Chatham. My suggestion would be that in nine out of 10 cases or greater, it's not going to be an issue for someone to state their home address, and that you may, as the Chair of the Board, continue to ask for an address to that effect. Whether someone for privacy or other reasons refuses to divulge his or her address, again, it would be within your discretion as Chair whether or not to allow them to proceed to speak, as I do think it would be a reasonable manner restriction. However, I think you should weigh the consequences one way or the other of a challenge and, and a potential further foray into that particular issue.
All right, thank you, Pat. And then, you know, no, no big secret, I mean, I understand the edits, the philosophical element of why these edits are being presented, and no problem with overall with how it's being presented, but there's no big secret that the public comment on agenda item policy that we have in place, which was amended, this had been amended multiple times, but it's been amended, you know, by the majority of the board, is one that I, I try to operate on. It is not my preferred method of, of, of operation. As we did earlier tonight, you know, having a public comment on each agenda item is a, is a more preferred, I think, complete process. But the board, you know, as a collective entity, has put a policy together, and, and I, and I don't think it's the proper policy, in my opinion, but it's, you know, I, I do try to operate it with, with some respect to the board, but like tonight I changed policy. And I do think, and I, and I'm not sure if I read the language, I think there's, I think the Chair should have some discretion on how to operate a meeting. And I'm not sure if the language, kind of the crossouts under the public comment, change that in the way I'm interpreting it or, or not. But I know I'm in a minority on this board as far as how to, how to conduct a public comment on each agenda item, but I just want to put it out there because fundamentally, that is an issue that I've had for quite some time, so. Mike.
Well, let me, let me start off in a, in a very agreeable way and say that with respect to the question of discretion that Corey just articulated, I'm, I'm somewhat in agreement. The places where you, with respect to the Chair, the places where you've eliminated at the discretion of and you've substituted said limit to be enforced, I, I, first of all, I think notwithstanding what the policy says, there will be circumstances where the Chair will just exercise some flexibility for good reason. But I, I would be more comfortable if the, the, the language were something more at the reasonable and appropriate discretion of the Chair. So there's some flexibility for the Chair to, to, to manage the meeting. And part of the reason why I say that is because I think if the, if the, if, if the limits are too strong, are too rigid, then you're inviting people in the audience to start saying, hey, wait a minute, that person is, is violating this, that, or the other. They've had six minutes or whatever. I, I just think that it ought to be in the discretion of the Chair to let somebody go over by 30 seconds or a minute or whatever is appropriate. So that's a comment that runs throughout with respect to the question of discretion. The other thing that I, that I, that jumped out at me was the, the sentence about pursuant to, this is at the end of the new material in the public comments section, pursuant to constitutional free speech principles. I have no doubt that's an absolutely correct statement of the law, but to the extent that we have essentially a legal opinion in the, in the policy, again, that offers an opportunity for the public, in my view, to, you know, sort of enforce what's in there. And I, you know, I don't think it helps us in terms of what we're supposed to be doing or, or how we're proceeding. And, and if that is a gloss to the preceding sentence, I think you can, you can change that to say that comments made during the public comment session should not be deemed to, to reflect the views of the board. Those are my comments.
Can I strike that last sentence?
Yes, I would strike the last sentence. I would, I would strike the pursuant sentence. Yeah.
Additional comments? Jeff?
Yeah, I would just, I, I agree with Michael wholeheartedly that I would, I would strike that sentence beginning with pursuant, and it's changed for the comments that I totally agree. Otherwise, it's good. Thank you.
I'm fine with the changes, too.
Dean. Can I just ask again, Mike, what's, what's the rationale, you and Jeff, for deleting that sentence?
My rationale is that that's, it's, it's, it's legal advice to us, which, you know, we, we, we should have in mind as we proceed with our meeting, and having it expressed in this document offers the opportunity for, you know, for anybody who's outside of us to attempt to enforce it. And, and I, I, I just think that's, it's, I mean, the best thing I can say about it is superfluous.
Okay.
And if I may, I, I, if I didn't say it at the outset, I think this is an excellent job, and I really appreciate the changes.
Could I ask also your, your earlier comment, where you were suggesting some language about the discretion of the Chair, where would that go? Where?
Pretty much everywhere you'll see where, everywhere where the, the phrase "at the discretion of" is crossed out, I would substitute the language that I suggested.
Well, I, I do have a couple of comments, I'll make them, and then I would just ask if Pat has any comments on the suggested changes that Mike has proposed. First, Pat, we have had in the past, people come to the podium who are not residents of Chatham, they've so identified. Are we obligated to listen to them? By hunch as we are.
Yeah, I think you are, because I, I, there's no, no bylaw or other such authority would govern the conduct of your meetings in that respect. So I think the whole purpose of a public meeting, in, in the broadest sense, is to, to allow input from the public at large, and that does not, that is not restricted to citizens of the town. So I, I would think that, yes, I mean, if, if someone chose to speak at, or requested to speak at one of your meetings and you prohibited them from doing so arbitrarily, that could be problematic.
So my second question has to do with the public announcements policy. Are we, are we talking about that as well?
Sure.
Yep. So in the, one, two, three, fourth paragraph, where, where somebody makes a comment that goes beyond what's, the parameters that are laid out previously, and then you say, but the, the language reserves any such comments or questions for other appropriate public comment sessions during a board meeting. Does that obligate the Chair to place that particular comment or question on a future board agenda, or is it subject to the very last sentence? I'm sorry, the second to last sentence where it says the Chair shall have the discretion whether to place a citizen-requested item on the board's agenda? Because currently, the policy here says, anybody can get up and make a request for an agenda item request, but we have allowed the Chair the discretion as to whether to ultimately place that on the agenda.
Yes, the, the reason I put that in, in there, Dean, was to comport with the time, place, and manner, you know, parameters that are well-recognized in constitutional law. You're not prohibiting someone per se from offering any type of comment that they, they wish to offer to the board. What you're doing is directing them to an appropriate public forum when that particular comment can be made without detracting from the subject matter that is appropriate for the public announcement and agenda request portion of the meeting. So I think it, it does fall within the discretion of the Chair in that case whether to actually place it on, on a, a board meeting agenda, because the fact of the matter is, the individual could bring that particular comment up during any public comment or open comment session that they choose. It's just not appropriate for the public announcements and agenda request section of your meeting.
Okay, thank you. My final point is a, a comment back to the Chairman relative to the previous policy, where you were a minority of one to make the change. I would just say in the, I don't know, four or five years since we've had this policy in effect, which requires, limit, which requires the public, which locates public comment at the beginning of the meeting, we've waived that so many times, and I think for legitimate reasons, that if the Chair wanted to proceed in the direction of changing it back to the previous routine, I would be supportive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A, a couple of things. First of all, I, I, I recognize what you're saying about the predicate for your position, but I think tonight is a classic example where the, it, it was, it was appropriate and necessary, and it facilitated the discussion with really respect to two agenda items. We didn't really need it with respect to the rest of them. And over time, my observation has been if it's important, and there's clearly a, a groundswell of interest, you waive it. And, and I, I just don't, I, I'm, I wouldn't frankly be in favor of, as a rule, making the change, but, and I know you want to respond, but if I may, I want to come back and ask Pat a question with, with respect to your other point about whether we can, somebody who has, who doesn't live here and has no connection with Chatham, who wants to speak, I, I guess I, I find it strange that, that we, that they have a First Amendment right to come in here and speak without any reference to the relevance or whatever, or, or the basis for what they have to say. And, and I, I wonder how that, how that, how you, you sort of reconcile that with the rule that I'm familiar with, that at town meeting, somebody who's not a resident has to get the approval of the meeting to be allowed to speak, not a, not a, not a, a registered voter.
Right. Well, first of all, town meeting is a legislative body, and, and there are various differences in the rules of procedure that apply to legislative bodies as opposed to executive bodies or administrative bodies within the town. I, I think that there could very well be non-residents who have vested interest in what, what Chatham government is doing, whether it's because they, you know, they may own property, they do businesses in the community, or they are otherwise invested in, in the town. So I think to bar them or to preclude them categorically from speaking at a meeting could very well raise an argument, at least, that they are improperly being restrained from their right under Articles 19 and 16 to assemble and speak freely at your public meetings. It's just, I tend to look at that in a bit more cautious vein, particularly as many municipal lawyers do since the issuance of the Baron decision. The SJC has, has cast a very different light on this whole concept than that which previously existed in the Commonwealth.
Can I, yes, offer one comment on that issue, and then I want to get back to something that Mike said. We've had people come before us who have no vested interest in the town of Chatham other than they're trying to get the town, the Select Board to endorse a, a, a program or, or legislation that they're sponsoring. We, we periodically have our friend from Eastham who comes and asks us to file, file letters of support against, on, on the subject of pesticide usage to control growth around the utility lines. And, you know, I, when I was Chair, we had someone from Brewster coming and talking about the Select Board adopting a policy to ban plastic bottles, so, you know, and we generously allow, have allowed them. So I just wanted to say to Mike's point, and this may be a minor rebuttal, but yeah, that's true. In the agenda tonight, it says under one item, public comment will be accepted. So everybody who gets the notice of this meeting, goes on the website on Friday afternoon, knows that on item D, public comment will be accepted. So they sort of have to assume public comment is not going to be accepted contemporaneously. So if they can only attend the latter part of the meeting and not the, the opening part of the meeting where public comments are, they're somewhat disadvantaged. If they learn afterward, had they shown up, they would have been able to speak because the Chair said you can do that. So I think, I don't know if that's an issue Pat has any comment on, it's not a big deal, but I just, I just, I don't think the votes are here to change the policy anyway.
Is we've jumped around so many times over the years, and certain things we just feel are more important, that we want public comment during the agenda item. I think we should just have a very clean, clear policy, and with those items that really don't have much discussion to be added to it, aren't going to have much discussion. And, and that's where I just, I, I like consistency, clarity, and it's just, I just find it a better, it's a better expectation on anyone who comes forward, because we've had, you know, we have that policy, and, and, you know, we've each, at various meetings, been like, oh, you know what, we should have public comment during this meeting, and then we kind of shift the policy. And I don't like going back and forth, I like consistency. So before we go back to the board, is there anyone online? I do see a couple of white, or yellow, yellow hands, but it's failing me, so.
I have it. So we have Stephen Buckley first, Elaine Gibbs, and then Gloria Freeman.
All right, Stephen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the, the idea of civic engagement, public participation has been a, I guess you could say, a pet project of mine for many, many years. And actually, I ran on, that was my platform when I ran for selectman unsuccessfully in 2009. But the good news was, I was able then to go and attend a lot of meetings in Washington, DC, that had to do with citizenship and how to improve the relationship between citizens and their government at any citizens and their government at any level. And so the idea is that, and that's why in 2014, I petitioned town meeting, and they adopted core values of public participation as town policy. And that's why I was, so I was trying to nudge things in the direction of exactly what the chairman was speaking of, having some simple and consistent policy that, so that people, ordinary people, reasonably intelligent people can know, express themselves, know what the rules are. So when they show up at any public event where they're allowed to speak, that they know what, they know what's going on. And that's what happens at town meeting. You see the rules, which are then adopted at town meeting, about how much time you have, and how the, how the game is played. And you don't have to, and they don't get changed in the middle of the game, or at the beginning of the game, just as you're getting ready to get up to bat, so to speak. So, and that just discourages people. They don't want to look stupid. And so I encourage, that, that's one of the reasons why, under the agenda items that I mentioned earlier today, is that there'd be a, and back in 2019, I asked that there be an agenda item where there was a public communications and task force advisory group, whatever you want to call it. The idea being that, that there's people in this town, as we know, who have had a lot of experience in public relations, public engagement, so forth and so on, and to use their collective knowledge to advise, just like many other committees, to advise you about their thoughts, so that something like this, for example, that's being presented now, might not even have needed to be necessary. We might have been ahead of the game instead of reacting to supreme judicial rulings. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is that I'm throwing that back out. I'd like to be able to say that, you know, you can get together and say, how can we make it, can we have, provide maybe some political cover for those who are on the fence about going back to the old way, which I believe is best when someone can listen to everybody talk about grinder pumps, or whatever it is, and they can go, oh, that's my question that was answered. Now I don't have to say anything. Because when you have it at the beginning, you can have a shotgun blast. You give them all, you know, your whole thing, all the things you want to say, and they might be answered in the course of the board's discussion. And you don't have to, you know, spend your time espousing on stuff that you think might be spoken about and that need to be addressed. And they might get addressed. And so, and grinder pumps being exactly one of those things, where it's the back and forth, everybody educated, everybody about, oh, I didn't know that about grinder pumps. Oh, okay. By the way, I have a grinder pump. So, and I used to live on Lion Hill Road. Oh, anyway, that was interesting. That's the part, and I don't know if I'm approaching five minutes, but the other part is that things like where exactly the type of thing that the chair was asking about, you know, do you have to say what house you live in? You know, those should be, that, that would be better to be brought up before it comes to the select board, through another group, some other things like that. I mean, there's communities all across the country are wrestling with this very same thing, not just in Massachusetts. So I would say, take advantage of the fact that we don't have to come up with our own little customized way of doing things. I realize this is in reaction to a legal opinion, so, but on the larger picture, I think we would do well to have some group organized across that could provide support to everyone, so that every committee doesn't have to come up with their own communications plan. That would be an advantage, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Elaine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I think that it should be sufficient to say Elaine Gibbs-Chatham, or Jane Doe-Brewster. That would tell us something. I don't necessarily think we need to give our street addresses, but that's just me. I have one question on the page two, public comments on agenda items. I've read this 10 times, and I don't know if it's me, but it says, "Public comments will be accepted on all agenda items after public announcements and agenda item requests, with the exception of committee appointments, personnel, or items noted as board discussion." If I'm reading that correctly, that means you can't make a comment either at the beginning or during the board discussion. And if I'm wrong, town council can, but I think you need to strike "or items noted as board discussion," because that means it's an exception, and you can't speak there. And you can't speak at the beginning. So, if I'm wrong, but I've read it 10 times, and I think it means that you can't speak at the beginning or during board discussion.
All right. We'll have Pat respond to that in a moment.
Okay. And then I would also suggest, I, I agree with Stephen Buckley, and I like the way Corey has handled it, you know, as a balancing act, allowing certain public discussion. The problem is limiting it to five minutes, a public comment at the beginning, when there are 12, 15 agenda items, like the packet on November 28th was 154 pages long. And to say that we have to pick and choose and come up with the most important things to say in five minutes on all of those items, particularly when we're faced with so many massive issues in the next year, budget issues, et cetera. I would like to think that we could do it, as Steve said, during the agenda item. The problem I have had is I comment at the beginning, and by the time the agenda item comes up, if I have questions or comments, many times they're not addressed, or the answers are incomplete, or some misinformation challenging what I've said, and I have no opportunity to come back and say, no, this is where I got the data from. So unless you are willing to say, okay, if somebody comments at the beginning, but during the agenda item, if it's not answered properly, or there's misinformation, that that person has a right to respond, I think that becomes cumbersome. I think we should go back to where we just comment during the agenda items, then we all know when it's going to happen. We don't have to come in at the beginning of the meeting and have to go through and say, okay, I can comment on this one, but I have to wait on this one or that one. Particularly if people want to do it in person, they have to sit there for the whole meeting rather than just coming in for that particular item. So I hope that in this, since this is new policy, that you address that. And I think that it would be a lot more time efficient if people just respond during the agenda items. Because again, 90% of the questions would probably be answered. It's very difficult to anticipate what you guys are going to say, what the presentation is going to be about, whether or not a vote is going to be taken at the beginning. It's much easier to just listen to the dissertations and the presentations, and then comment at that point. So those are my recommendations. I think it'd be a lot more efficient for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria?
Gloria Freeman, Kendrick Road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak on the issue of being able and when to speak at future meetings. As the board has heard many times, I am not in favor of public participation on agenda items being restricted to the beginning of your meetings, totally out of context with the issue in a vacuum. I believe it is disrespectful of our citizens and prohibits any meaningful participation. The purpose of your meetings is to make decisions in the best interest of the town, based on factual information, your experience, and importantly, the expressions of town citizens. Town council has amended your public participation policy to align with the recent SJC ruling of Barron versus Kalenda, which, as you know, clarifies that local governing boards do not have the authority to prevent or limit all speech that may be deemed upsetting or offensive during their meeting. As a result of his revisions, you have the opportunity to also revise other sections of your public participation policy. I hope that, one, you will consider allowing citizens to speak during your discussion of an agenda item. Let us hear the description and your discussion of the item, and then, before any vote is taken, and within some limited number of minutes, make our comments or ask a question in context, and perhaps even get an answer to our question. My second recommendation is that in the revised policy, the section on public comments on agenda items, paragraph two, it states that, quote, "Comments by the public. Comments will be limited to no more than five minutes per person in total," end quote. There are times when an agenda contains several issues of importance to citizens, and I think we should be permitted to address each individually within a three-to-five-minute time limit. Thank you for considering both suggestions.
Thank you, Gloria. Pat, do you want to respond to Ms. Gibbs' question under public comment agenda item, the kind of exception sentence?
Sure. Let me first note that that language was existing in your policy. That was not modified or amended at all in my comments. And the way I construed it is that public comments are to be accepted on all agenda items, with the exception of committee appointments, personnel issues, or items noted as board discussion. What I drew from that was that the board will periodically, or has periodically classified certain agenda topics as board discussion, presumably with the intent that it would entail only discussion amongst board members without public input. So I look at that as a separate category of agenda items that is, is an exception from the public comment being accepted rule. I think it makes sense in that regard.
No, I'm, I'm clear. I, I do, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I do appreciate the clarification, so. Well, folks, I'm not going to beat the drum. I know I'm an authority, so let's, we have, the, the red edits, for the most part, we, I think we've addressed with some of the, the edits we've been proposed, as far as the discretion of the board, and the striking of the, the last sentence underlined under, in the middle of page two. So those elements, I don't have any issue with. You know, we can move forward with that. My opposition to the vote will be strictly on the basis of the core value of, of my, my concerns with the, with the body itself. So not going to make a big deal out of it. Dean?
Did, did Pat comment on, on the, I didn't hear Pat comment on the, Mike's first edit on the discretion of the, I think you had words like appropriateness.
Yeah, where, I was going to substitute said limit to be enforced in the reasonable and appropriate discretion of the chairperson, and that would be throughout wherever "at the discretion" was crossed out, that we would keep that and, and leave the, and, and I, you know, I mean, I don't want to get into the difference of opinion that, you know, is sort of subterraneously floating in the, here at the board table. But I will say that some of the comments that both Ms. Freeman and Ms. Gibbs articulated can be handled without opening up what I regard as the floodgates, to essentially have unlimited comment associated with every agenda item. And, and so that's, that's my view.
All right. Would anyone dare to make a motion tonight? Trine?
I move to adopt the select board meeting public participation policy and the public announcement and agenda request policy as edited and amended, meaning what Mike had added in on the discretionary, and the delineation of the pursuant to constitutional free speech sentence.
The elimination.
The elimination of it, yes.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? And again, the edits are not my issue. It's the core. So I'm going to vote nay. Select board member Shell?
Um, yes.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member DeCastro?
Aye.
All right.
Before we have a motion to adjourn, can I just, sticking on this topic, so I've heard from some of the staff liaisons that we should distribute this for application across the board with boards and committees. So I just wanted to put that out there. We've allowed for the chair to make decisions about public comments and when, but there's, there has been some inconsistencies that I would like to address. So if you want me to bring it back at another meeting, that's fine. But I, I was thinking that this might be something the board would want to communicate to boards and commissions about, at least the changes that town council had proposed in compliance with the SJC.
We have, we have a, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we have a public policy that we adopted for committees. Maybe that needs to be re-
I think we bring it back and have a more comprehensive discussion.
Because I wondered about that, too. And maybe that should be given to Pat to refine suggested edits.
We'll bring that back and have a more comprehensive discussion, yes.
Can, can I, I just want to know, maybe this is an oversight, maybe it's, was to be added, but the, the parenthetical at the end of the public announcements and agenda request policy, I, I think, down at the bottom, I think, doesn't that have to be, incorporate a recognition that it's further amended by this action?
We would do that.
By what we've done here today?
Yes.
Yes, we would do that.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right.
I, I move, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second. That was very quick. All those in favor, select board member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.